Aloha, the August 23rd, 2023 Neighborhood Board Number 34 meeting is called to order. Welcome to our Makakilo Kapole Honokai Hale community forum. My name is Anthony McConna Paris and I serve as the Chair. We are holding a hybrid meeting and we have community members in person at Kapole Hale Conference Rooms A and B and online via WebEx. Order and decorum, if you wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand or your actual hand in person and wait for the Presiding Officer to recognize you before speaking. Please introduce yourself, it really helps with the minutes. And it makes Logan and Michaela's job much easier. If I missed any hands in person, please get the attention of Logan or any of the Board members, throw something at us and then we'll figure it out. Now speakers have three minutes to comment on any item. Please state your first and last name again for the recording and those giving reports and presentations tonight, please be brief. And presentations, we have 10 minutes. The materials have been provided, they're all online in our Google Drive and they've been shared electronically. This is our community forum, so everyone is asked to engage with the spirit of aloha. Be free to vigorously debate on the agenda items, remember to treat each other with respect and especially when you're passionately advocating and let's honor each other by keeping to the lot of times for speaking and collectively, let's finish on time. So are there any questions for tonight? Awesome, with that, I will call upon Logan Hutchinson to do the roll call of Board members.
Bosler.
Here.
Dudley.
Here.
Barrera.
Here.
Kahela.
Heyo.
Con.
Here.
Lindstone.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Tal. Paris.
Here.
We do have Forum Chair with eight out of nine present.
Awesome. So welcome everyone and let's get down and dirty. So we have city monthly reports, starting off with Honolulu Fire Department. Okay?
If you could come up.
Yeah, come on up and if you could sit right over there so that we can make sure that we got you on WebEx, that'd be great. Yep, you look good, top left corner.
Hello, everybody, my name is firefighter Sun of Kapole Fire Station 42 Watch. I'm here to report the incident statistics for July 2023. First is fires, we have one structure fire, two wildland brush fires, eight nuisance fires. We had zero cooking fires this month and 11 activated alarms with no fire. Next, we have our emergencies. For this month, we have 202 medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, 12 motor vehicle crash slash collisions, zero mountain rescues, one ocean rescue, two hazardous materials incidents. That concludes the emergencies. Next, I would like to share the fire safety tips and announcements for this month to help ensure the safety of our esteemed elders implementing prevention and preparedness practices will promote independence and reduce frequency of injury or death from home fires and falls. Learn more at Honolulu dot, sorry, learn more at fire.honolulu.gov/fire and life safety slash kapuna. Between the tips we have, stay in the kitchen when frying food and cooking on the stove top. Keep a lid nearby. If a can of food catches fire, slide a lid over it and turn off the burner. Remember, the stove top and oven are not to be used for storage. Next, ensure working smoke alarms are installed properly. Bed shaker and stove alarms are available for hearing or visually impaired occupants. Plan your escape from fire based on your abilities. Keep your exit routes clear, ensure windows and doors open easily and practice your escape plan. When the alarm sounds, get outside and stay outside. Call 911 from your safe meeting place using a mobile phone. If you are unable to evacuate, shelter in place, stay near a window and call 911. Exercise regularly to build strength and improve coordination and balance. As a doctor, about appropriate physical exercise. Be aware of your surroundings, including uneven surfaces. Take your time when getting out of a chair or bed. Stand and get your balance before you begin to walk. Keeping walking areas, pathways and stairs well lit and clear of tripping hazards. Wear sturdy, well-fitting footwear and utilize handrails. The last tip I have is review your medications with your doctor. Keep an updated list of medications, medical directives and emergency contacts posted on your refrigerator. Next, I have some words for the Board and everyone here. As our thoughts and prayers continue to go out to those affected by the recent tragedy in Maui, we would like to provide the attached action guide to inform and empower our communities to prevent, prepare and plan with their family for a wildland fire incident. Continue within the guide our useful checklist to, one, take action today to eliminate fuels and create defensible space. Two, create a family disaster plan, including important contact and medical information. Three, have your emergency supply kit assembled and ready for evacuation. This guide is also available online at fire.honolulu.gov along with other fire and safety information. Mahalo for your support in keeping Oahu Fire safe. Thank you.
Good, mahalo Officer Sun for the report from Honolulu Fire Department. Are there any questions or concerns from fellow Board members? Chair recognizes Vice Chair Dr. Kyoni Dudley.
I'd like to know, you guys are involved in fires, what about hurricane preparation? Do you guys ever have to be trained for hurricane or anything like that?
Yes, we do have online training as well as physical training for hurricane preparation.
And how often do you have that?
I believe it is once or twice a year, but I have to confirm.
And could you tell us a little bit about what that's like? We're involved in hurricane stuff.
It's basically a review online with pictures, slideshows, step by step how to prevent, how to prepare, what to look for and more as well.
Okay. Good, maybe next time you come, you could tell us a little bit more about that?
Yes, I'll get that information through our PowerPoint or something.
That'd be great.
Yeah, of course.
Awesome, are there any other questions? Chair recognizes Secretary Michaela Lindstone.
Mahalo, I have a fast question. A pile of green waste debris that's really dry, no longer green, but very dry. How dangerous is that during the summer and during the time of extreme heat in regards to fires?
Green as in it's not brown?
Green as it came from a tree or some sort of plant. So dried leaves that are in a pile just sitting somewhere with a lot of homeless around it is, how dangerous would that be that, you know?
I feel like that is still a fuel for a fire, so we would like to do our best to, you know, prevent the buildup of fuel, but I can research that and bring you some better information.
So it would be a.
It is a fuel, yeah.
That's mahalo.
Awesome, Chair recognizes Board members, Amy Bosler.
Thank you. I was just wondering, is there a risk assessment for wildfire in the Makakilo area? We have a large base that I used, I was a teacher in Nanakuli and so wildfires were always on my mind, especially this time of year. And now that I live in Makakilo, seeing we have similar thoughts.
Yes, we do do pre-plans and like everywhere around the island, especially in our area, multiple times a month, yeah, multiple times. So we have it in our system online where we have the information of the phone number, contacts and all that stuff on our codes network, so we are prepared for that.
Thank you, and then just to follow up, on the fireHonolulu.Safety.gov, will that have tips for our community members on reducing their risk of wildfire? Like, I know since Maui, there was the tips coming out about no shrubs within five feet of your house, maybe having metal roofs instead of.
We have a bunch of tips all there. No problem, just if you look through it.
Are there any other questions from fellow Board members in person or online? Yep, now we're opening up questions for the community, please introduce yourself and ask your question. Come, come. So we can hear this, why they not can hear online if you're not close?
Sheila Dairs, I am a homeowner at the. And my home is right adjacent to H1, that's freeway. And so I've been struggling with trying to find out who's responsible for that side of my fence line, which is right on the freeway because the brush is tall, it's like up to here. And then have little weeds that now became trees and it's all dry, I mean, you can just see it. And I finally got a vote of who's responsible, it's the Department of Transportation, has nothing to do with you, but I'm just asking the Board, are you folks in touch with the Department of Transportation to keep them accountable to maintain that land? Because I have no success, I've been calling them since August 16th. In fact, I notified my rep, Representative Souza, who then thought, she referred me to HHDFC. They informed me that they don't do that, they're not responsible, it's DOT. So I've been trying to reach DOT and they have not responded to me. So it's, that is potential Lahaina damage. Because the properties are right up against this big tall brush and there's fireworks that happen on the weekend. Negligence can happen, somebody tosses something. So I'm worried and I just need to, I'm trying to find out who can hold the Department of Transportation accountable. Because my Board can't, because that's not our area. So that's fine here.
Okay.
Because it affects an entire community.
Mahalo, so we can bring it up again and the community concerns, because it's not.
No, it's not yet.
Right, but for reports to the Board, we have Highways Division for Department of Transportation that comes regularly, so we can bring up that concern with Mr. Henry Kennedy. So, and then we can follow up and ask them, what's the plan in the next month meeting? There's no.
Well, I just hope nothing happens if not the Yomahalo's on fire.
You're absolutely right, so we can ask them to provide the information and we can definitely see if there's.
I thought about just so that you, the person in charge of that area is Ryan Akata. He's the lead engineer at DOT, called him twice and he hasn't responded to me. So anyway, I just need help.
No problem. Mahalo for bringing up the community concern and we will go back to Honolulu Fire Department and see if there's any other questions or concerns regarding Honolulu Fire Department from the community. Seeing none, thank you so much for the report and we recognize what Auntie was talking about with the brush along the side of H1, because it's not just over there, it's around Makakilo, it's actually by the solar power plant, but like it's, it's in Kapole, it's in Kalailoa, like this is all over the place, so it's not just over there. It's Makakilo Drive. Okay, okay, so now, thank you very much, appreciate it, and let's go to Honolulu Police Department next.
Aloha Board Chair, members, community. Sergeant Moroka with Honolulu Police Department, District Gate, Community Policing Team. I have here with me John Giran, Officer that just came on board with Community Policing. If you remember, Officer Shimotsu, he got promoted to Corporal and then reassigned to Waheva Districts. He's not alone.
But we're better off now, yeah?
Yes.
Welcome, welcome.
John has six years. He's been in our district for a long time. Career and hardworking officer, he's a big asset.
Awesome, thank you.
See you tomorrow.
So I have the stats for July of 2023. For the district, we had 35 motor vehicle deaths, nine in Kapole, Makakilo, Honokai Hale, 16 burglaries in our district, three in our area, 111 reported deaths. Our area was 46. Unauthorized entry into motor vehicles, 32, of which 11 was in our area. 51 speeding citations issued, 270 miscellaneous citations, parking violations is 87, total citations 408. Total cost for service, 7,560 in District 8, of which Kapole was 2,385. I have one announcement. September 29th, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, we have another coffee with a cop. This is at Nanakuli McDonald's. Feel free to come down and we're gonna have open discussion and complimentary coffee. And then I had some homework from last time from Dr. Vice Chair Dudley. So his question was about the assault fronting the Kapole Police Station. Somebody that got discharged assaulted a female outside the station and unfortunately, the female passed away, so it was a murder case. And the doctor's question was whether, so that was when Kapole was doing all the receiving of processing and receiving of the arrested parties because there was renovations being done down at the main station and he wanted to know whether, because they weren't able to return back into town, whether that was a factor in.
Right.
Him being upset and, you know, assaulting someone. So I found out that the suspect in that case was, had psychological issues, he was diagnosed. He was supposed to be taking his medication and he was not. That was the main reason for, for whatever reason, he got upset and got into a fight. So it wasn't, it didn't have anything to do with, you know.
Transportation.
Bus fare. Just wanted to make sure, provided the names.
Thank you for the following up. Thank you for the report, are there any questions or concerns from fellow Board members? Chair recognizes Dr. Vice Chair Kyoni Dudley first and then McFerrar after.
Just to the follow-up questions. Did he need money to go back home? Does anybody know that?
That was never brought up as far as I know, you know, as far as whether he needed transportation. He didn't ask for any, we didn't confirm that.
Okay, and the other question was, what's happened to that case? What is happening with him?
So now, once it goes to court, we don't really stay on topic, we don't, I can't find out if he's still incarcerated. But there's usually bail set unless the judge deems that he's not fit to be released and they'll be charged and automatically incarcerated, so I'm not sure, I can check on that next.
Okay. Did he have prior arrest for same kind of thing, mental problems?
I didn't, oh, you mean?
Or violence or anything like that?
Again, I can double check that.
If there's really anything to know going on, yes, thanks so much.
More homework.
Now Board Member McFerrar.
Yeah, hi, thanks for coming in. Looking at some of the statistics, I see where moving violations dropped over about 67.5% where they were in June over July. I've seen you folks on like Makakilo Drive and doing speed enforcement and things like that. I'm just wondering if maybe some of the officer shortage is kind of contributing to that drop? I can't imagine anybody else, and everybody decides they're gonna start driving with speed limit, you know, in a lack of customers and that respect. But I do see that speeding violations, you guys are staying pretty consistent, 51 in July, 59 in June, May, so that was just something that seemed like it had kind of dropped by quite a bit.
So it is, you know, our district is one of the probably three busiest districts on our island and we are shorthanded. For every shift that we have in patrol is either minimum staffing or a little bit above that if we're lucky, right? So, yeah, it is busy and as far as the stats, it does go up and down. If you look at the previous months, it goes 300 to almost 600, back to 460. Some months are busier than others or we cite more, depending on what's going on. We may not have time to do directed enforcement, right? Like if there's a lot of emergencies and we're tied up and we don't have time to pick a spot and do the enforcement, so it really goes up and down, it's hard to see.
We appreciated having the radar trailer coming up the hill for as long as we did. I think that kind of a little bit of a dent in things and I do see you guys, you know, monitoring traffic coming down the hill. A couple of weeks ago, it looked like it was specialized services over on Palahia and they had a table set up at the entrance and a car sitting actually in the road, what was that? It was in that apartment complex on Palahia that's going towards, you go down the gulch and up.
Yeah, like. And it was. It was on the road?
Well, you guys had a table set up, there was specialized services guys in all draft, kind of standing around the driveway and there was actual blue and white sitting in the road with the turn signal, you know, the overhead lights directing traffic around it. So we didn't know whether there was some sort of a raid going on there or what was, what was happening.
I'm not aware of that incident or that operation, I can find out though.
Yeah, because I saw it and then I got asked about it and I go, I don't, that's, you know, not my side of the house.
The SWAT.
I didn't see the specialized services truck, that was the thing, so.
Yeah, you see if it's a large event or incident that that truck will be the command center. So I don't think it was a large incident that.
Okay, yeah, because they had like a little table set up there at the driveway and everything and it might have been, you guys have some, some minivans and some other unmarked, you know, vehicles that I don't see very often once in a while and so, all right. So it didn't seem like it was anything that was that big a deal, I didn't know, it might have been a fairytale situation, but I did the specialized service event for a community,
you know, some kind of a presentation or education or something.
Oh, yeah. All right. Okay, that was all the questions I had, thank you.
Thank you, Chair recognizes Board Member Michaela Lindstone.
Mahalo, I noticed that there's no crosswalks coming to Kapole Hale. So most people park across the street and in order to get to Kapole Hale, you either have to go up to Kamaha or all the way to Kalakaua. It seems like in order to get here, you have to break the law, you know what I mean? It's just, yeah, I wonder, would you recommend a crosswalk here? You know, because most people park across the street and jaywalk to get to.
Oh, yeah, I would recommend as many crosswalks as possible. Is that on?
Because there's only two crosswalks.
This road right here?
Yeah, this road right here, yeah, there's only two, one is far over there and the other one is like three blocks.
This road, you know, there's not as much development yet right now, but I think eventually all these empty lots over here are gonna get developed. So it would be good to have crosswalks. That would be either city street, Streets and Science Department or Department of Transportation.
Mahalo.
Right. Okay, are there any other questions from fellow Board members in person or online? Okay, any questions for HPD from the community at large or concerns? Seeing none, thank you very much for your diligence, appreciate it and our best wishes to the HPD person that had to go to Wahewa, we won't hold it against them. Now let's go to Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative. Oh, sorry. My apologies, Board of Water Supply. I thought they told us they weren't gonna be here this week, on this month, that's why. So let's just double check. Okay, so we are, we are good to go.
Hi, my name is Keet Suzuki, I'm the Deputy Director for the Department of Management and I'm here as the Mayor's representative. And sorry, my eyes were really bad, so I'm gonna read a lot of this, but a few things in the way of month's highlights. Earlier this year, the city entered into an agreement with Matt Levi's Security to provide security for Kuhio Beach. And this combined with the efforts of the Safe and Sound Program are creating friendlier, safer and more secure Waikiki. The mayor also hired two, brought on two new cabinet members, Gene Albano for the Director of Department of Facility Maintenance, Dita Hollyfield, who is joining the Department of Enterprise Services. Both are Director, I think they're actually not districtates anymore, they're actually Directors. Gene is an accomplished electrical engineer whose work experience includes KakaCo infrastructure redevelopment, the Honolulu Fire Department South Street Headquarters, EFM's Halava Bay yard and other things. Dita spent the last nine years as General Manager of the local radio stations owned and operated by Salem Medium Group, Media Group, in addition to her duties as a radio dish jockey on country 97.5 and since 1997 has managed her own successful life and business, which includes the All-American Rodeo. Affordable housing in Honolulu, as I think everyone knows, Governor Josh Green on July 17th assigned an emergency proclamation to battle the escalating affordable housing crisis in Hawaii. And the city, the Mayor's Office and the Department of Planning and Permitting are working with the state and the state's Build Beyond Broad Borders Working Group to try to fast track and cut through some of the regulation red tape. Then as housing costs increase, some of our neighbors are struggling more than ever to pay their rent and utility bills to reach these households. Eight community events for the rental and utility relief program were held this summer. These events were part of the program's temporary reopening this summer funded by 25 million in state and local fiscal recovery funds. More than 600 Oahu families applied for short-term rent and utility help and were helped, about 18,000 Oahu families were assisted to stay safe, stately housed during and after the pandemic. The Forbes distinguished the city and county Honolulu among America's best employers. It was ranked number two, I think that was number three, but anyway, number two employer in the state and number one in the state for government services. I also had homework and I will try to give you my best report. One that Logan and I put together, took us a while to kind of beat up the question back and forth, but I'm glad we came up with a question that I hope captured the essence of the questions and the concerns that were raised and hopefully, if it didn't, please let us know. But this is the way that we summarized the first issue. As you may recall, there was multiple residents the last time that were unhappy about the current maintenance cycle of five to six weeks for the median and requested that the median be maintained every two to three weeks. Residents also complained that the median's grass was brown, probably. Residents also complained that the median's grass was brown, probably dead in places, speculating that the median sprinkler system was not working in various places. The request was could the city inspect and if necessary, repair the sprinklers for Makakilo Drive median? Additionally, one Makakilo resident said he felt slightly disrespected. I couldn't remember his exact words, but anyway, I put down disrespected by the city and felt that his neighborhood was not being treated fairly and equally because the median strip in Makakilo was not quite well maintained while the median strip in other areas in the Kapoleh neighborhood was maintained very nicely. What is, Ed's question was what is the maintenance schedule for to maintain the median strip in Makakilo and then in Kapoleh? But we could get a comparison, we might get an idea of what was going on. The answer that came back was, and I apologize, the answers actually came back this morning. So if there's necessary follow-up and stuff, please let me know. The sprinkler system was recently serviced during the week of August fourteenth and are in working condition. Please let us know if they're not. The sprinkler system runs twice daily at two AM and six PM. In Kapoleh, BFM, the Department of Facility Maintenance, only maintains the median on Kapoleh Parkway from nine-one dash fifty-four thirty-one Kapoleh Parkway near Wendy's to the train tracks west of Ollo Waka Drive. The other medians are maintained by homeowner, homeowner associations and for the state Hawaii TCCA. That was the first issue. My second homework was a resident requested that the bathrooms at Kapoleh Regional Park be better maintained. They are not cleaned, stocked or patrolled enough and families at the park often feel unsafe about using the restrooms. The response that came back is the supervisor for this section has been reminded to be sure staff clean and stop the restrooms at Kapoleh Regional Park throughout the day. For any KRP Kapoleh Park related concerns, please call the Leeward Oahu District Office at eight oh eight seven six eight six eight eight nine. Should members of the public feel unsafe for any reason, please do not hesitate to call nine one one two three four. There was a request for rail ridership statistics. And specifically, a resident requested that statistics be presented to the board on ridership numbers for the rail on opening day, the free period until July fourth, and then the numbers thereafter. The response that came back is opening weekend was seventy-one thousand seven hundred eleven. First month ridership was one hundred and sixty thousand five hundred seventy-five. And the average weekday ridership is three thousand seventy-one.
Where did they go?
But that's not that many either. I haven't written it yet. I'd actually like to get to write it. The last item that we were asked was about the real property tax credit outreach and whether residents, residents wanted to know how information about this is being provided to the community, especially since the deadline too far was coming up October second. And I actually got a whole bunch of different things. Let me try to give you the short version. BFS Treasury website contains the most current information and application downloadable and or fillable versions. An article was published in July, August issue of Generations Magazine. On July twelfth, two thousand and three, Star Advertiser ran an article on the tax credit program. A press release was issued on July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three to the news media on the tax credit program and received wide coverage from television stations to print media. Information brochures and applications are available at all city halls, online at Honolulu.gov, Tresh, both senior centers. Applications will also mail to anyone who applied to the program last year. Tax credit presentation, some of these have passed, I won't mention them to you. But in August thirty-first, there's going to be a tax credit presentation at Kani'oe Senior Center. August thirty-first, Councilmember Tupola's Town Hall. September eighth, HBGS Conference at Alamoan Hotel. And September twenty-first, HGA, HGTA retirees. Another press release is scheduled during the week of September third to remind everyone of the filing deadline of October second. Calls will be made via dial my calls to everyone who received tax credits in two thousand and twenty-three and who has not yet filed for two thousand and twenty-four. That's my report. How do we do?
Pretty good. Thank you for being quite thorough. Are there any questions from fellow board members? Chair recognizes board member Mick Ferrer.
Hey, thanks for coming up today and giving us your report. I'm going to be asking DTS some of these questions. We had a town hall meeting a while back with the mayor regarding the Makakilo extension. As you know, it's been a frustration of ours and obviously now it's a frustration of councilmember Tupola and everybody else involved. But I was wondering what results has the mayor come up with as far as that meeting that we had? I'm going to be asking all the questions to DTS because obviously they're the ones I should be talking to. We had a meeting where he came out to the community center. We took him down to the end of the dead end and showed him where it's supposed to be. We understand there's money now, that eighty percent of the project to be funded with federal funds. And so that drastically cuts it back where before they said they couldn't afford it at all. But that's my main question that I've got. The other ones I got.
I'll pose a question.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions from fellow board members? Chair recognizes Vice Chair Dr. Kellie Dudley.
I don't think you gave us an answer about the, how often they're going to cut the grass.
Yeah, I did not. The question was posed, but it was not answered. But you know, we did say that it was, it wasn't satisfactory to be five to six weeks cycles. And instead, request was made for two to three weeks. Did not get it.
Okay.
So that's my homework.
Yes, I followed up with them again. I tell them we want a specific answer to that. And we want every two or three weeks and we want them to do it. And if they won't, see, the thing is, about six months back, we brought this thing up and I, I kind of followed up with the Poli'ouak community association because the Poli'ouak Community Association used to do the median strip. And I, they asked me to come to a Poli'ouak Community Association meeting and follow up on it. But at the same time, the city looked like they were going to do something. They told us they had hired new people and that things would change. Of course they haven't. And so they think we could take it back to the Poli'ouak Community Association, ask them to take it over. Right now, if you drive up on Kila Drive, where the water sprinklers are, you can tell because there's green for about a foot around each sprinkler. The rest of the grass now is just entirely dead. If they say they're sprinkling, somebody ought to come out and dig a little bit what's going on because evidently the sprinklers go on, but there's only enough water for, to water about a foot around each sprinkler.
Couldn't clarify, this is on the fourteenth, so this is still even now it's.
There's, there's no water. Oh, it was on, yeah. Sporadic.
I noticed, I was thinking of you, I noticed, oh, the grass is green.
It's very tall. It's.
That's where their sprinklers are right by the sign. It is, it is green.
When people are having a hard time coming out of side streets and driveways, when the grass is so tall, you can't see the cars coming, that makes it a little dangerous.
So maybe that, that's the other issue that they're actually, remember brought up was if you could check on when the grass is going to be cut along the highway as well, which is that same area.
That's the five to six versus two to three week.
Yeah. It sounds.
The sprinkler watering one.
Right, okay, yes, so it's good to clarify both of those things versus that the sprinklers are sporadically working, but are they actually effectively watering the entire median area? No. Is there, are they maintaining the grass level and height so that it's safe for people to come in and out of the, of the roadways? No, so that would be helpful to follow up on whether or not we can do anything on increasing the schedule or making it so that the water shoots out of the whole median. Okay, I'll go back.
Yeah, another question, actually, some neighbors that actually asked me about this because of the way that the median always looks really bad compared to like Good and Villalanti and they're always nice. That they think that the water that's being used there going up that, that drive is wasted. And at Malgalani Elementary, they have an artificial turf grass that they have in their median that doesn't need water at all. So you end up saving on water and you end up saving on maintenance and it looks good all the time and it's always green. And I was wondering if that might be some sort of an alternative that, you know, the general cost of being able to so-called carpet that, that median might pay for itself over time when you don't have to repair water and sprinklers and the cost of water. We're always talking about saving water on this island and we're using potable water to water something that generally alone, it looked good for about a week and then once it grows out, it starts to get gray at the beginning. It never looks, so.
Okay.
That's an alternative.
Thank you. If you can investigate whether or not that's something viable from the city, Chair recognizes board member Gordad.
A possible alternative condition could be maybe low water drought resistant native plants instead of grasses because.
Right, so.
Yeah, other alternatives.
Right, so with that one, if we're going to look at the alternatives, we have worked with with HCDAs for Kalailoa area and they have a list of drought tolerant plants and natives for the area that actually that they do for landscaping that could be actually used and implemented by the city because they already got the crib list and also they're fire resistant, so. Multiple stones one time. Any other questions or concerns from fellow board members for the mayor's office online? Okay, Gordad ahead. Is that a community member? Is that that? Okay, I'll go Moon and then that after. Okay, you know more, going to community members that have concerns for the mayor's office, just going to that's right, Gordad.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you great.
Okay, great, thank you. First of all, some thoughts concerning the median. I have been active with the neighborhood board and PCA for at least ten years. I know that PCA at one time did cut the grass, that's before I became involved in any of it and they were told that they cannot, it's a safety issue. You can't, I can't, they can't, it has to be done by the city just for safety. So trying to get somebody else to do it isn't going to work. My question continues to be, why do we receive substandard service compared to the median along Kamau Kila Boulevard? And we can even extend that to the grass next to the police station. And we could even go as far as, you know, the grass at Kapoleh Regional Park and Makakilo Neighborhood Park. Even those places, which I know we have problems with from time to time, have grass that's better maintained than our median. So my question is, why do we continue to receive substandard service? I'm not interested in getting on a two to three week schedule because then that's going to become too frequent when the weather turns a little colder. It needs to be done when it needs to be done, just like those other areas. And, and could you please go over those rail numbers a little more slowly and, and one more time, please?
Sure. The opening weekend's number was seventy-one thousand seven hundred eleven. The first month's number, one hundred sixty thousand five hundred seventy-five. And the average weekday ridership is three thousand seventy-one.
Okay, what time period does that average weekday number cover?
I do not know.
Mainly I want to know whether that includes opening week, well, it's not going to include opening weekend because that was, well, it might include it because that was several days. Does it include that first week or not? Because that's going to make a huge difference.
I, I don't think it does. That would be deceptive.
Average weekday is three thousand riders. That's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, how often does, how long does the rail run?
I'm sorry?
How long does the rail run?
Hours of operations?
How often is?
What's the hours of operation?
I, I know, I, I don't know it right off the top of my head. I do know that they extended for special events. And so there's going to be something for some bone dance at the stadium. There was something in Waipahu earlier. And when they do those, it goes to like ten or eleven. I think otherwise it's like seven or eight, something like that in the evening.
So it's open maybe twelve hours a day?
Yeah. That would be a good.
How often do the trains come by?
I'm sorry, this is not my department.
Logan can provide the hours for us, please.
Yeah, so the weekday schedule for the skyline system is five AM to seven PM on weekdays, eight AM to seven o'clock PM on weekends. And for city holidays, it is from eight AM to seven PM.
Okay, and how often do the trains come by?
Every twenty minutes.
So that's three trains per hour times fourteen hours, that's forty-two trains per day divided by three hundred, three thousand. That's not very many riders. That's not very many riders at all.
Yeah.
Sorry?
Yeah, yep. Do you have any follow-up questions for the mayor's office?
That's it, that's all. Please continue to bring those numbers. I would like to see them again next month.
Okay, appreciate it.
That's my request. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Vice Chair Dr. Kellie Dudley, Gordad.
I just want to say, I just agree with that, that the city says that it's impossible for the Poli'ouak Association to. So you could look into that too, but I, I just don't want you to think that that's said because I was given a different impression.
Yeah. So to clarify, it will be really helpful to see what ways could happen, including whether or not we could do something creative like dedicating it as a park because they have done that in Chinatown for areas for two feet by two feet.
Right.
They made it a park because of the safety issues of who's going to maintain it or whatnot because in the sidewalk, it was city property and they had to make it a park that then could be managed by a non-profit organization to actually care for it. So, so please go and check the alternatives that might be, that'd be great. Okay, any other questions or concerns from the community for the mayor's office? Chair recognizes Senator Kurt Favella.
First of all, see, can you take care of the box for a while? Makakilo Drive, you guys ever, maybe you can tell the mayor whatever, it's not a very long stretch. But it turned into turf. Again, all other states is doing that in small, medium areas. Because this is not only a concern of the fire hazard and the dirtiness and ugliness, it's just that it's simplified because we're nothing but water. Right now, we know we get plenty of water issues, but nobody cared about the bike and vehicle, but anyway. With rail, chair?
Yes.
I understand we have the pain general map here and if anybody drives during the weekdays that lives in this area. um, uh, on South Road, North South Road, look at the parking right. Very impressive. Any cars, people are riding it and I never thought they was going to park there and ride it because I wouldn't, but anyway, I mean, we have people are riding it. So, you know, it's, it's going to be a slow process because we don't have too many areas for them to go. And I can guarantee if the water part open, you watch how much people going to be using. I mean, it's a slow thing, so it's a gradual effect on anything else. And Frank Fossey would say, chair, let's not bring bus, you know, everybody said? But we need the bus, we don't want island and we want now, we not only the top ten, we the top five in the nation for ridership. So it's fun, bro, like anything else, right? All these shit is growing, the reason of becoming a Makakilo.
Thank you, Senator Kurt Favella. You're always welcome to be here with us. Okay, um, the last thing from community concerns that I brought up to myself, um, in light of recent events over in Lahaina, Maui and, and our own board's efforts for disaster preparedness over the last two cycles. Uh, we'd like to actually ask the mayor, um, what is the plan for wildfire management from the city side? Because in twenty fifteen, the Hawaii Wildlife Management Organization said that our area is high risk, just like Lahaina. Kapolei, Kalailoa, Ever Beach, Waipahu, Makakilo, all the way down to Cayana Point, including Nanakuli, Dooloale, Maile, Makaha. We are the highest risk on the island. And a community member came over here tonight to actually raise that very concern. We know there's multiple jurisdiction, we know it involves the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, we know it involves H C D A, we know it involves Department of Transportation, but what we're asking for is what is the coordinated plan to manage all of these areas so that we don't get stuck like in another Lahaina situation? So that would be really helpful if we know is top of mind. So please come back and tell us what they found out, what did they learn? How are we going to make changes for our area?
That is definitely on your.
Thank you, and thank you for doing your homework.
But the homework didn't bother.
Just look in, you get one A plus. With that, now we'd love to welcome up our council member Andrea Tupola.
I didn't know he's giving out grades. Okay, so, um, I gave you guys some pamphlets, so the Hawaii Wildlife Fire Management Organization is hosting a community meeting tomorrow. So if you're interested in coming on, play library, five to six P M. So a lot of the management prevention is not necessarily on the city, but really private property owners, D H H L, um, private landowners, because you know, a lot of the brush that's not been trimmed may or may not be somebody that's just negligent of taking care of their properties. So the meeting smart night is going to be about how to manage it. People talk a little bit about like what we can do in neighborhoods, um, for the plan. So if you guys can come, they also have an online link. The other thing I gave was the, um, printout of the C I P. that we passed this year. So I did put in stuff in for Kapolei Regional Park, uh, for the bathroom up where the archery ranges because it definitely needs to be rehabbed, um, as well as the septic tank needs to be prompted. And I put in somebody for Kamaha and Kapolei Parkway for the stoplight meeting, which we had at Mahana. I know they haven't been out yet, they told me end of August that they were going to put up the R. cut. So that's what they told me last week because obviously they told us in the meeting that it was the summer and the summer is over. So they reassure me, but you know, we're still looking for this stanchions to do the R. cut so that it's safer at the Kapolei Kamaha, um, intersection. And then I think I did put in information about R. three, which is Restore, Reconnect, Revive Homeless Outreach Program we run. We are running it out of, uh, church encampment industrial. So we did it for the first time on Tuesday. We are reaching out into the homeless encampment dance by Kapolei comments at Barbers Point. And then of course, all of the, um, media individuals in Kapolei are welcome to come, so twelve to one, Tuesday, Friday. We provide really good food, in fact, Kama from, um, yeah, I am Olelo is the one catering our meals. We provide services like I D. documentation, work, um, community port. So if there are individuals that you know need these services, please tell them to come and receive. I think last thing, if I remember everything I gave to you, I'll just address some of the, um, concerns that came up today. So Logan, I emailed you the last, uh, PDF presentation in our transportation committee that has the rail numbers. And for anyone that wants regular updates, I would suggest just emailing John Nauchi, who's our deputy for Department of Transportation Services. So we will have periodic, uh, updates in our transportation committee, but I don't think monthly they'll have it. So just so that you guys have a direct line, his name is John Nauchi and he'll definitely help you with any of that information. As far as the Makakilo Drive extension, um, just to kind of reiterate how we recap the end of the town hall was that the E I S. that was completed by RM. Town, they gave it to the Federal Highways Administration who did not review it because the project fell off of the STI.
Right.
The TIP is the State, um, Transportation Infrastructure Project List. So once it got de-prioritized, the Federal Highways Administration did not review the document, so it's still a draft E I S., which is why they haven't released it to the public. Getting it back on the STI tip is going to take the D O T. saying that it's a priority. And there is no funding for it right now and the D O T. isn't prioritizing it. So kind of like I told Board Member Pereira, we have to keep pushing to get it on the STI tip. Once that happens, then they'll actually review the E I S. that was already completed with taxpayer money that RM. Town did and again possibly received from there. Um, in regards to the case that happened in Kapolei, probably your best bet is going to be the prosecutor's office because actually being pursued in court. So I can email with you and the government liaison, so you can ask my questions because H P. D. probably have that information since that case is on. But I think a lot of us kind of interested in how that broke down because it was unfortunate. I mean, it was a murder right here on the street, like crazy. Um, so last thing, I just wanted to say for the Department of Facility Maintenance, I think everyone should take this down at seven, six, eight, four, three, one, zero. So if you are like, there's a, there's a, you know, trimming issue or there's this or that, whatever, like D M. M. basically clean streams, roads, whatever, the supervisors, I was out there with them today at Ulihauma Canal. We're having a resolution about just the cleaning of that canal, the more regularity of it in our, uh, Public and Infrastructure Committee. So I just wanted to give you guys some kind of direct in route. I did also email the director of D O T. Y. sitting there asking about them trimming along the, um, the freeway.
Nice.
Up against Kapoleino, so I'll figure out who's in charge of that. But I will get on more seriously on the whole like Makakilo trimming. For some reason, I thought it was just going to be done in a month and I was like, what the heck, we're still talking about this? Give me a weed whacker already.
Right.
Yeah, I know, this is like ridiculous, so I don't want to talk about it anymore, like we'll just take it seriously, we'll do it. And then I do think all the suggestions brought up are totally doable, so we need to just get in a better space with that. So that's my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you, council member. We appreciate the thorough report. Going to, remember, uh, Amy first and then Mick after.
I was just wondering, did you, were you able to get the park, the Kapolei Park? Um, we were going to put in a, an email or something to get it on the agenda to look at the, the playground, the holes in the playground.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, we put it in as a riser, so I'll have my office see. A riser is just a fancy word for like a note to the department, R. I. S. R. Stand for Logan.
It's a request for information, something.
So even if I call over to the department, they still want me to put in this little note to them called a riser. So we did put in the riser for the holes in the park, but I will, I will email Logan and see where the risers are.
Thank you. Just wondering, you know, playability.
Yeah, amen.
Go right ahead, remember.
You know, I've been crying forever and ever about the vehicle registration forgiveness. And you, of all people, have been the only one who's really kind of taken a hold of it and kind of tried to run with it. I've tried to get in touch with, um, the, the city and they said, oh, we have nothing on our, on our radar right now about doing something like that. And it's something that's important because there's people, I know in my own neighborhood that are getting their vehicles towed away because why? And it isn't so much the registrations, five hundred dollar tax, right? Because you got the registration part, that's only three dollars, then the initial tax, it's like four fifty, five hundred dollars. So, you know, people's attitudes have been, well, why should I pay? I'm, you know, two years down now, why don't I just take that money and just go park my car down the street and go buy another car?
So, um, he's talking about bill thirty-seven, I, I introduced the vehicle registration forgiveness one and I, I had, you know, the conversation with the department about the fact that many people after getting so far behind registration basically just abandoned their car. They just leave it or even if it gets picked up on the side of the road. Say, for example, a tow yard wants to rehab and get it into service, somebody pays all the back registration. So I was telling them, instead of us scrapping perfectly good cars, could we take it under consideration that the director would figure out the situation if the car is still usable? Is there a way we could forgive the back registration, especially if it's a used car that someone wants to use and maybe it got picked up on the side of the road? She's not super excited about my bill. So we'll see if it keeps moving. I think next month they might get a hearing in transportation, so.
Well, and, and there used to be a thing where five years would go by.
They used to have that after five years.
And, um.
Because after a couple of years, it's almost like.
No need, it's more expensive.
Dollars, I, mine is five hundred dollars every year.
Yeah, that's, yeah, even my motorcycles was two hundred dollars.
Right.
So if I get a hearing for it, I'll email you so you can come testify.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Any other questions or concerns? Dr. Kiyuni Dudley, Vice Chair, go ahead.
You, we also mentioned the artificial turf. You, and I, I want to say, uh, I, I think there's a problem with artificial turf though because we have trees in the middle of the the lake. And I don't think you've been used artificial turf from tree roots.
Well, I'm definitely not coming up with a solution. I'm going to ask D F. M. because they're the ones with all the materials. I'm sure they have better ideas than I do, so I'll get back to you guys.
Yeah, awesome. Any other questions? Oh, Vicki Allov, go ahead.
Um, the Kapolei Archery Comfort Station, is this someone in the archery range down below? Hardly anyone uses that.
So the, the problem is that homeless limit it. So we told them to turn off the power because there's charger, they were charging boats in there. And then the archery range guys basically can't go in there because all the sinks are broken and everything's broken inside. But then also the septic tank has been popped for like ten years. So it leaks up there, which they said they already have maintenance money to pump the septic. I said, at the very least, pump that out because it's like horribly gross inside the grass area. So I'm not saying that it's like a today thing because this might duration a couple of years for us to get it, but I figured if we could make it basic improvements where it's more secure, because right now the bathroom has openings still where you can get inside. So like the one we haven't seen country, like it's completely like closed at night, so you can't get in it. So even if we were to secure it a little bit better so that when we fix it, we're not fixing it just to have it damaged the next day. That's kind of where we're going. They've done that to various bathrooms. Right now they're doing it at Polkai where they're putting up gates so you can't just jump in over the walls at night, so.
How would we get funding for the bathroom above the, well, properly restroom, the one that all the skaters and youth use? It's.
We can, we can put it in this next cycle. I mean, what specifically are trying to mix there?
Uh, everything, the toilets, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty nasty.
I think to, uh, Senator Favella's points, the parks are just poorly taken care of, like. So I'll put it in the next C I P. cycle.
Well, I would think security would have to be first. You have to secure the bathroom before you renovate it because if it's just renovated.
That's why the money needs to be put in is because when we did like the locks at, um, Polkai Bay, like we couldn't do it if there wasn't gates.
Right.
Because you can just jump over everything, right?
Right.
Because they're full in the top, so that's why the money has to go in first to secure it and then things get fixed so that every month they're not buying a new toilet and new stuff.
Okay, yeah. And then one last question, weed and seed, is that for Kapolei?
Yes. Okay, but we'll see, you know, we really need more weed and seed, we haven't ever, ever reached, but we wanted to see if the program could get a little bit more this way as well.
Yeah, okay.
Awesome. Any other questions or concerns for fellow board members in person or online? Any questions or concerns from the community members at large for Councilmember Tupola? Hi, man, yes, please introduce yourself and ask your question or feel a concern.
I'm Miffy Pereira and, um, we already talked about the extension, so thank you, but I'm still concerned about us not having crosswalks on Makakilo. Um, thank you, we, we, we took one up there sideways a couple of weeks ago to bring awareness to that. I mean, you drive down Kuniya, there's five speedhumps now out on Kuniya, but yet our kids are still trying to run across with no crosswalks yet.
Right.
I'm concerned about our kids out there on that and so I would like to get them back in place or speed up something up there, um, because it's just, it's dangerous and, you know, like the. You think you know that actually made people a little bit of aware, even I, I was like, oh, I'm doing thirty-seven right now and I should be, you know, bring it down, you don't realize it, so we need to be aware of that so we can keep our kids safe. And thank you for, um, keep fighting for our extension.
Yeah, so, and just for clarity, um, you can cross the street without a crosswalk and it's not illegal. I asked because they were ticketing people right here at, um, what is it called?
That apartment building.
Yeah, I forget. Anyways, they were ticketing people and it's a bus depot, quote unquote. It's also called the street, um, but they call it the bus depot and they were ticketing people for walking across, but there's no crosswalk.
Right.
The ma, I called the major, the major said that it's not illegal, that they shouldn't be ticketing people, so she called the traffic division that was running it because the D. eight guys were not running it and it's fine. I'm not saying we don't need crosswalks, but if you guys wanted to have D T. S. here, I feel like you guys have a lot of traffic questions. You should just have them come here and make a match or all of it. Because I've been trying to, like, one of them, like with the, um, Mahana Town Hall, I was trying to like, hey, what are we doing for this thing? Because I have like ten million things. I think you guys should have, I mean, this meeting, you guys have some valid D T. S. questions.
Awesome. Appreciate it, council member. Well, thank you very much for your report and appreciate you being here with us. Oh, wait, I was sorry, call him mine, we still got two more people waiting. Senator Favella, go ahead.
So nobody, I mean, we're all asking for a crosswalks, everybody like the speedhumps. Nobody been seen to tell the city that they need roundabouts on every single intersection on the top of Palai Line, the bottom of Palai Line, when I'm by the fire station. Because all those intersections is huge. And you know why I know it works? Because when I go to here to visit my family, they have two in a short stretch in Makakilo Drive. So that would deter a lot of speeding. Another thing is people got to put little red pants, they need to just slow down. You know, I understand, yeah, you don't want to go that fast, I'm going to be in love here, not overdrive. Anyway, another I want to ask you, um, A, C, how do you say that? And suing the city, right? You know, the city, you can, can I explain to the community why they're suing the city?
So the A C. O. U. is suing the city saying that they cannot do S. P. Os if there is no places for people to go. But they are not suing the city for any monetary amount. So, um, he works with a lot of homeless, I work with a lot of homeless. I would argue that we have openings, but the process is difficult, difficult, difficult. I mean, I just spent an hour trying to help twelve people with housing just before I got here. So I'm not saying it's wrong or right, I'm saying that sure, the S. P. O. should have a lot of outreach prior, but I'm not, there is sixty openings at Halei Bay Vista, just saying, the building in Waina, but I cannot get them to move on any of my applications. There's openings at Seawind, so I think their lawsuit is just sounding the alarm that we needed to more outreach and that's why our office is taking the steps we have with our.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that. Uh, Etika, introduce yourself and ask your question or concern.
I'm only here to talk about vehicle registration, I'm not sure if it's the one that I'm circling. We have our military that has a vehicle exemption under registration, so they just charge a ten, twenty dollar processing fee. I was aware of that, not, not in agreement with it because every time the state and the city says this is what the military brings in, they fail to account what the military is taking up. You know, besides our lands, right? So we have to live with this because as a former veteran myself, I was in and I paid for what you state taxes. So wherever I had a car, I paid them those taxes if it was required of me. So I don't know why we have to be so generous to the military. But the part that I have a real issue with is that when we purchase vehicles, we get saddled with all of that back registration and taxes. So if the fake state and the city wants to exempt these people, exempt it wholeheartedly, don't put it on the burden of us, the taxpayers, to pay their share of them using our roads. Either charge them or don't charge them and it's free and clear. So that when we purchase a vehicle, we're purchasing the vehicle, not it and the five, six, seven years of the back taxes, which I'm going through this process. So I'm learning this now. I should be saddled with two thousand dollars extra and it depends upon your vehicle, the size,
Right.
the weight of it, it's going to determine how much we have to pay. So we're already paying the taxes and coming under the city, but I believe it's a state statute, so we have to work together on that. Um, and then I'm just going to jump right here and I hope we get to bill thirty-nine as I come for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
The registration note, like my two arguments with the city is if the vehicle has been abandoned because they were like, oh, we're going to miss out on like, uh, funds, you know, like money we would have collected, I'm just saying. If the vehicle was abandoned, you wasn't going to get the money.
Anyway, that's right. It's fair.
Uh, you're missing out on that, they left the car because they don't care about it anymore, it's on the side of the road. So I think that's my other concern is that it's supposed to be for the repair of roads. When we pay weight taxes, it's because we're destroying roads, right? So my thing was like, if we're talking about people who had a hardship or on a fixed income, they couldn't do it and they're not taking their car out a lot, that they really aren't destroying all the roads, I mean, like. So I said, shouldn't you take into consideration those cases where it really is just not? But they really aren't destroying all the roads. I mean, like, so I said, shouldn't you take into consideration those cases where it really is just not fair to be paying that much registration tax if you're not using your karma? Or if no one had been using it for five years?
Right, okay. Thank you. Questions for council member?
Yeah, well, the other thing was, was that with this, with this particular forgiveness, was I was looking at it from a standpoint, remember that I said, it would be like an amnesty period? Like, we would only do it for a certain amount of time, not something that's ongoing. So a lot of these people are just trying to get caught up to COVID or whatever. And so we give two or three years of, you know, back help, try to get them back in order.
I, I put that in the bill that she could choose to forgive all part or some, or even make a payment plan.
Right, yeah.
I was like, lots of options besides pay all five years right now.
Because I had a Ford pickup truck that ran perfectly good, and it had to get repaired, it needed a transmission repair, and by the time. I thought the five-year plan was still running, but it was only three years behind. Well, because of what I owed, it was worth, it was more than the truck was worth. So I sold it for parts. Well, I know darn well the kid that bought it is out driving it around with expired tags, probably no insurance or anything, because he needs a work truck. And it was a good running truck, but for me, I couldn't, I wasn't gonna register him because it was gonna be as much as what the truck was worth, so I sold it for parts.
Right.
And there's a lot of people that are out there that are both selling their cars for parts, and people are just out driving around, tagless and bagless.
Okay, thank you.
And at least.
No, thank you very much, council member. You're being very helpful for us.
Very good.
Um, to address Ante's point earlier about Bill thirty nine, it is on the agenda, we'll be getting to that. And for Bill thirty seven, uh, we will uh, consider actually working with the Transportation Committee and see whether or not uh, the board will get a recommendation for supporting it in the next meeting. Okay, let's move now to community, oh, sorry, Ampo Report from Uncle Frank Canario.
Uh, yes, the Ampo Executive Director, Mark Garrity, reported that the Policy Board heard presentations on the Transportation Improvement Program. And the Oahu Regional Transportation Plan, or the ORTP. He is trying to raise public awareness of the ORTP. Pamela Bailey and Graham Masterson of Stantec, a local engineering consulting firm, covered results of the first transit rider survey on destination information. And related demographic attributes. It included both bus riders and those who do not use the buses. The value of travel time, fares, and other aspects of transit. Key findings indicated preferences for improved speed, better transfers. Time competitiveness, and overall rider experience. Uh, the bus ridership relies mostly on residents with major activity in the urban Honolulu area, which has the top ten routes. And the majority of trips do not include transfers. Uh, I'm not sure if that's gonna remain the same with the rail now. Uh, the focus going forward must be on customer experience and on-time performance, financial sustainability, and collection of real-time data for bus and rail. On response to a question from Tony Gaston, they said there were between thirteen hundred and two thousand participants in the survey. Uh, Daisy Marai from Waikiki mentioned that the homeless are a concern on public transit. Concerning financial sustainability, I asked if there were anticipated changes to the City Council resolution that fares can only cover. Between twenty-seven and thirty-three percent of cost. Uh, they said it's not known at this time. Uh, the Citizen Advisory Committee then improved submission of the survey to the Policy Board. The CAC also approved a resolution on improving the pedestrian crossing of Kamehameha Highway to the Waiauwa or Pearl Highlands Rail Station. Uh, that's my report. Mahalo.
Good. Thank you, Uncle Frank, for the thorough report, available online as well. Are there any questions for Uncle Frank Canario? From board members or the community on the Ampo Report? Seeing none, thank you, Uncle Frank, for continuing to advocate for our putting Makakilo Drive Extension back on the step tips so that we can take the next step. Appreciate your work. Okay. Now let's go to board, community concerns and announcements. Fellow board members, any um, concerns you wish to raise or announcements at this time? Chair organizes, Dr. Kiyuni Dudley, Vice Chair.
I just would like to talk to the board for a minute about a real concern I have. Um, Logan, were you able to get the email that I sent you and flash that up there, the picture?
Uh, yeah, I was there.
Okay. Well, let, let me talk to you until he gets it up there.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the fact that our, our people have to move away. You know, I, we can't afford to let, things are not being done right. The military occupies such a great amount of our land. Um, military people are treated differently than we're treated. The rich are buying huge apartments in brand-new buildings. They're filling those buildings with outsiders. There is no way for us to stop uh, people from outside buying up Hawaii. And I think it's time that we, as a neighborhood board, join with other neighborhood boards and start looking at what could be done.
Hmm.
What kind of, you know, how can we stop things? And if we can't stop the wrong that is being done here. Then let's start looking at alternative as far as restoring the Hawaiian nation.
Hmm.
Staying within America or not, you know? I, I think that it's time. We are being so worked against by our government. You know, America takes care of the world. Uh, we, we put our military all over the place, we, we take care of the world. And that's wonderful, except it costs us so much that people live better in other nations by a long shot, a lot of other nations. We are not the happiest, best-off nation at all, okay? And I think we ought to start looking at those things. I think we ought to start looking at maybe calling someone in to give us some ideas about. What could be done to keep people from buying up Hawaii? Um, and if it can't be done, then what could be done outside of the United States if we were not part of the United States? I'd, um, so I, I, I just wanna bring that up. It's a real community concern, and it's time. Uh, you know, if we don't start defending ourselves now, we're gonna be dead, you know? And uh, I just wanna bring it up and see if maybe we could start doing something about that.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Dr. Kiyuni Dudley, for raising the questions about the lack of affordability of our islands, um, that locals are being uh, pushed out. The, the native Hawaiians in particular, there's more outside of the state of Hawaii than um, ever before, uh, than inside of the state. And uh, maybe we should be talking about more creative solutions about how to address those concerns, so. Uh, we'll come back to your concern when Logan can fix the technical issues. So we'll go back to any other board members um, that have questions, oh, sorry, announcements or community concerns online, in person? Okay, uh, well, there's just one for me, Ben, as board member, then we'll watch community is, uh, I, um, I just wanna mahalo on everyone in the community that have sent their thoughts and prayers uh, out to me. Um, I had, I'm suffering from long COVID. I've actually had to go through two surgeries recently. That's why I'm wearing my mask. Is because I'm on the doctor's orders not to try and get sick again while I'm recovering. So, uh, they want root rotter my nose, so now it's actually straighter than straight. So now I can breathe because of the inflammation was so bad. That, I mean, it basically restricted me from breathing uh, through my nose and through my, my mouth and bowl, so it was. Um, but um, I'm glad to be here with you all, and I appreciate everyone's concern, and um, so if I'm wearing a mask or if I'm um, being a little bit distant, it's because I'm on the doctor's orders, not because you hung up. Okay, um, with that, uh, we're gonna go to community concerns, and I think we have, um, Mr. Watson, yes. See you.
Aloha, Chair, and um, mahalo, board members, members of the community. My concern is in regards to the um. Makakilo Quarry Inquiry, and them wanting to extend their uh, use of that quarry for an additional fifteen years. So the concern revolves around the fact that, um, you know, my wife, when she first moved out to this area. Um, they experienced a lot of dust and impacts, like negative kind of health-related things going on because of the dust kicked up from the quarry. Um, and so extend this contract an additional fifteen years. I'm kind of wondering like why they need to and what their uh. Are they keeping that in consideration? That the people that have lived here for a long time have dealt with that already once. Everybody had to get AC, you know, you couldn't keep the windows open, it was a, just a really bad problem. And so, um, I don't really see anything in that, you know, uh, information addressing those concerns. So that's why I wanted to bring it up here today. Um, so that's my concern. And uh, unfortunately, I'd had my hand raised on the last two uh, presenters, not, not uh, the very last one, Mr. Canario, but for uh. Councilmember Tupola and for the mayor's rep. I had two questions, but I wasn't acknowledged, so I don't know if there's something technically is going on with you folks, but um, I just wanted to make that known.
No problem, uh, Mr. Watson. Like, if that happens in the future, if, if we're um, not getting you, just feel free to um, chime in, because sometimes we can't actually see, uh, there's might be a technical issue. So feel free to chime up and be like, is this time for questions? But if you wanna field the questions now, there, there'll be more than, more, more than appropriate.
Okay, well, the, the particular question I had for councilmember Tupola was regarding her legislation for uh, or the proposed game room legis, legislation. Because um, I was at the Kalihii Palama Neighborhood Board Meeting this month, and councilmember um, uh, Ryan Dos Santos Tam. Uh, had presented information about them shutting down a game room in Palama, and they did it a different way, which was really effective, and a lot of the community member, members were very happy that. It wasn't like the past where they would shut down a game room and it would come right back. It, they closed it a different way, and all of the community members were feeling safer. I mean, you know, this had, you know, testimonies of people, you know, really happy and satisfied with that. So I wanted to find out what was going on, and if there's, if that problem is prevalent here in the area too, you know, Capule, Makakilo, Honaka, Hawaii, is there a lot of game rooms out here that we should be concerned about?
Yeah, well, yes, feel free to come back and answer the question. Thank you, council member, appreciate it.
Hello, Mr. Watson. So our follow-up town hall on game, game rooms is December fifth at Arvisaki and Waianae. We had one two months ago where we basically started the conversation, councilmember Dos Santos Tam and myself. Had three pieces of legislation that we're trying to use to kind of crack down better on these game rooms. So I will email the flyer to, um, well, actually, we don't have the flyer ready yet. The reason why we chose December is because at our town hall, the major, Major Laffer, said give him six months. And he was gonna clean stuff up, so I counted to six and then I made the date. So I said, on September.
Right on.
Tell me how much games room you shut down, since you said you're gonna shut them down, so.
Right on.
We're gonna have to report with, uh, prosecutor all.
Mahalo, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Um, our apologies for not getting to you earlier. Okay, um, what we see is, um, uh, committee member, Thad's break. Um, Thad, you still with us?
Yes, I am. Sorry, I was clicking twelve different things. Uh, let me briefly follow up on, on Mr. Watson's comments. Um, I spoke to the president of Grace Pacific, his name is Jared Shrek. Uh, he's a, he's a very nice guy. He's come to, he came to a neighborhood board meeting many months ago. Uh, but anyway, I called him recently and talked to him about the letter from DPP. He said that Grace Pacific is very disappointed with what it is the DPP sent out. He said the map is not very good. He said there's some other issues. He said the best thing to do is to call their hotline. Uh, I will give that number here in a second, and I'll, I'll post it in the chat. Um, the hotline, he told me that it rings in their office and their voicemails check daily, so you can get some good information. They used to, um, they've moved everything into the pit now, so all their operations take place there, so there's a lot less trucking of the material around than there used to be. So there's a lot less dust. I literally live right next door to the, to the quarry. It's, I mean, I can look out my window and see it, so um, things have gotten better. But anyway, the number for them is area code eight oh eight, six, seven, one, four, seven, two, two, and I'll post it in the chat here in a minute, but that's some follow-up information I wanted to give uh, on that topic. But, um, what I would like to know is, you know, given what happened on Maui and that Hiko may be responsible for it, there may have been some downed power lines and that sort of thing. My question is, what is going to happen uh, in the area where Ho'opili is? You know, for months, the board was. I use the word fighting for lack of a better word, was fighting with Hiko and Horton to get them to try to put those, those uh, power lines underground. Is Horton or Hiko still going to insist on putting those lines above ground? That's my question. Thank you.
Okay, um, Thad, and anyone else online, uh, if you could actually type your question and send it to Logan, because we're having a difficult time hearing you. Uh, because of the air conditioning problem that we tried to fix came back. So we're gonna have to put in another facilities request to address that. So, uh, we know Makakilo, Ho'opili, uh, Kalailoa potentially, and whatnot is going on the ground. So like, please write the question in chat, and then we'll get it into the minutes, and then hopefully send it to the appropriate people for response. Uh, now I see, uh, I think it's Uncle Ed Werner, right ahead.
Hey, aloha. You guys can hear me?
Yes, Uncle Ed, we can hear you.
I'm coming from Nanakuli, where, where I live. Um, I have family members up Makakilo. I got one of my daughters that live ninety-two, seven oh one Makakilo Drive. I have one in Capule, too. Um, a community concern I have is, it's, it's horrible pulling out of her driveway. I mean, the cars, the way they come down, um, Makakilo, um, I get hot time getting out. I mean, it's this. Waiting to have a disaster up there where somebody gonna get killed, and then the state, city, gonna like allocate speedhumps, it's too late. I just wanna, you know, talk about things I did in Nanakuli that I, I know will benefit Makakilo. You know, I, I fought for a lot of things in my community. Um, with bringing up, um, raised crosswalks, um, speedhumps out in the valley. After, you know, uh, remember, you know, my own son got killed on, on this highway. And I hope Tupola can come out and support, um. This raised crosswalks or speedhumps. And, and how I did it, after, you know, my son got killed, I went out and I became an advocate of drinking and driving. Until today, I work closely with HPD, we set up sobriety checkpoints every year. This year, we got, I'm not too sure if six or seven impaired drivers off our, um, uh, streets on April twenty-third. Even though my son's, um, so, you know, he died on a twenty-fourth, we did it on a Sunday. And I know things that I do in Nanakuli can really help and save lives out in Makakilo. And, and how I did them, you know, I so concerned pulling out of my, my daughter's driveway, like I said, up Makakilo Drive, it's horrible, it's terrible, it's on a blind corner. I gotta come out and make a left to come down, um, cause this speed by. Um, you know, I, I know when there was the, the, um, crash that happened on Kapialani. Um, I reach out to Ed Sniffin, and, and he's a good friend of mine's, and we had to, I talked to him that something had to be made, it's an emergency. You guys gotta do something. So what they did, they worked with the state, city, and they got it done. They got it done. I think if Congresswoman can push that agenda too, um, it, it works both ways. When I did Nanakuli, we had the HHL involved. Nanakuli Valley is the HHL. Our roadways is run by the city. But DOT, our state had nothing to do with what was going on up there, but you know what, Makana? Um, Chair Makana, they took the lead and they got it done. So now we're gonna be working our way down, um, to Nanakuli. And I think that goes for you guys can get the same thing. Let's not wait till somebody get killed, and then we're gonna come on and we're gonna be grieving. That family gonna have to go through what I went through and my family. That, that's do something to be, prevent that. It's hundred percent preventable. And I know the state can do it. I know with our, um, with, with Tupola or councilwoman, she can push this agenda too. And I, I know, you know, me and her had, had that thing that when our speed, uh, raised crosswalks came out in Nanakuli, Tupola came out and said some of her people didn't like it. But I could tell you, it works in my community. It works alongside my home. There's not one, since that, um. race crosswalk come up. I could tell you guys, there's not one fatality. We're not gonna wood. Thank Aqua and that's all we can do. So we got a plan to to implement something to prevent it from happening. You know, I get my kids up there. You know what? The Makakilo extension, it's my concern. People miss it, whatever when happened to Maui. I got family in Lahaina right now, me and my wife. And and we grieving too. So I'm just this what I wanna bring and I know that can benefit you guys, but state city gotta work together because the H H L, city and state did it and we're doing it. Sometimes you gotta treat your legislators good. Nanakuli, we get some good things coming for us. I don't know about Y and I. I don't know about Maka. Maybe some guys gotta treat them good. That's basically how I feel. We got a lot of things allocated to us and I think Makakilo deserve that too.
Thank you, Makana. Appreciate it. Um, just reminding everyone that we do have a three-minute uh limit on every topic and Uncle Ed just came underneath. Okay, um, awesome. Um, is there anyone else online that uh that we're missing? Because I can't see your hands. Um. Sorry, what's the name? Weedman?
My name is Dee Weedman. I have actually something uh more fun to present to you guys. It's an announcement. Um, I am the owner and event director of Aloha Racing. And I wanted to let you guys know about couple of events coming to the area uh in the next few months. First up, uh the the two events are identical, so I'm only gonna talk about one situation because it will be the same in both cases. Uh, the first one is uh Makoa scheduled for November fourth. The second one is Ho'omau scheduled for May fourth of next spring. Um, just a tiny bit of it actually is in uh within the boundaries here. I will show you. This one, here we go. This, all right, can everybody see my screen? Okay?
Yep, we can see it. Great.
You can see um the majority of it is in the Eva area. We're gonna be starting uh in the Waikiki facility, head down towards One Iula and up and around Kapole Parkway. The blue would be five K runners. The yellow would be ten K runners. So coming into your uh this neighborhood, it's just this part and it's just the half marathon. Uh, what I can tell you, the plans are, if I can figure out how to stop sharing. There we go. What I can tell you, the plans are um that portion of Kapole Parkway is three lanes in each direction. We would be consuming one lane in one direction. So no road closures. Um, it shouldn't be any problem because boy, do we start early at like dawn. So we hope not to cause any trouble for anybody. In fact, wh- what we actually hope to do is help. Um, Makoa in November supports Protectors of Paradise as a a local uh charity. And then Ho'omau in May will support the Fur Angel Foundation, um helping with canine feline issues all over uh the island. So wanted to just simply let y'all know about that, invite any questions, concerns right now. But I will also leave my contact information in the chat section uh if you think of something later.
Awesome. Thank you so much for the announcement. Uh, actually, did you guys wanna talk about the, come, come? If we can get the camera, Logan. Appreciate it.
Aloha, everybody. I'm Eva Lani McPrer. I'm the Cowpail Association Board. My name is Wendy Hanyo, who is the secretary of the Cowpail Association Board. And what we wanted to do present today, um our board is gonna do an uh event this year, December sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three, from five to ten. And we just got approval from my D H H Chair, Chair Kelly Watson, um to be able to close off Huayna Coast Street. And this is obviously our first year of doing our Kaliki Mako Makeke concert and event. And we're looking to probably have about fifty vendors and we're gonna have a concert. Um, we're putting the logistics together. We we didn't wanna start anything without the approval from our chair, so we got that. And um one of the requirements for the D O T, because we're shutting down Huayna Co is to give ninety-day notice to the Department of Transportation so we can reroute. And so that um deadline is September sixteen. So we're doing our due diligence and some of the report that Wendy was putting together. Um, they asked um to report to Kapole Neighborhood Board and see what their comments. So we're just here to let you folks know. We don't have any flyers or anything yet, but we got the approval today. Um, by next month, we're gonna have all the logistics and now that we can finalize everything, well, we just wanted to present it to our neighborhood board. And coming out as a new board of Cowpail, we hope to engage more with our neighborhood board and just introduce ourselves and, you know, um partake more inside our in our community, not just in our native community, but in an outside as well.
Awesome. Thank you for coming here and sharing with us that you guys been throwing party. Are we invited?
Yes, we're guys are home.
Just checking.
Probably in October, we will come and share again and give a little bit more and stuff uh just prior to our event. So we'll see folks back in October. But thank you very much.
Awesome.
Um, it's gonna be where the nine acre parcel by the high street of that um open field, that nine acre parcel. And right there, that's Huayna Co. It's about six hundred feet. We're closing up all of that road and using the parking of the nine acre parcel. So please join us.
Oh, one more question. Go ahead.
Um, not a question, just a comment. I just love that you're putting on a community event run by community. That's what our community needs.
This is our first time that we're doing it and we just wanna bring all the communities, our um, you know, our city councilmen, our legislators, our neighborhood board in the outside community. I think we feel that this is a time to just bring unity and community and let the native community just bring forth our culture and everything. So we look forward to meeting all you folks.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, uh any other board, community concerns or questions or announcements at this time? Uh, last round, uh we're gonna go, we have two more. Um, Senator Kirk Pavillo.
First of all, Dr. Dudley, I would kiss you, but I'm not gonna let you get sick. And thank you for saying that. So I'm gonna say true. So just wanted to let you know that um Oha, Kepua, uh C H A, uh keep together with the Lieutenant Governor and some of them, especially here, Senator DeDoy, and open up a uh Maui relief storage facility um in two hundred K out of the street. I wanted to let people know, so I'll put the latest name. I don't think she can care. But if she has an phone, I would be like, if you wanna volunteer, the number is eight, zero, eight, three, four, zero, six, two, two. And if you don't know her name, just tell them, I'll tell you for calling. Never put out the name. That's what I wanted to ask people because people don't know where the place stay. A lot of people wanna volunteer. They're already kind of wrapping up teams at the at the state capital. And I just wanted to thank everybody that brought Thursday and Friday. Friday was just crazy, crazy amount of uh things that we got. So ongoing, what we really need at this uh relief area, we don't need any more clothes. We need water, baby formula, um peppers, adult pens, a male and female. And then um just, yeah, a lot of baby formula. I asked people a lot of that baby formula and uh water. Yeah, so these things are being uh put in on pallets and they're wrapping them up. Oh, sorry, gas cans. Don't get the five gallon. That'll be easy for walking in. Those are the things that they're asking for, gas cans and there's a lot of help. So these things are going directly to the nonprofits out in Maui. So we just have to get some kind of line going and the L G decided to work with Oha and Kano Kepua and C H, C N H A get this thing done. Then we have some place to go. And then um Hawaii Community Foundation is also getting donations to honor uh Hawaii Community Foundation. And the other one is Maui Food Bank, you know, because there's getting complaints that um, you know, I don't I don't confirm, but the person was very good source. And the way um first uh I'm just gonna break cross, was telling them we'll give nothing, we just send money. So if the people on Maui, Lahaina and people on Maui challenge at these resources, what makes you think you can buy them any faster if we give you money? And then a lot of them was a big flatter is FEMA, same thing. So that's the reason why this this warehouse, guys, is very important for the families that is in Lahaina. This is gonna go to the families in Lahaina. Everything, if you guys like to check it out, go on there. It's open to everybody. So look how organized it is. And I was just feeling, like I said, I wanna take the L G and Senator DeDoy. Because after I left to come back on the pool to wrap up something, there was actually helping stack and wrapping pallets. So, you know, my hat, my hat, my love, all to all of them. All the guys gave money um and support to the Maui relief. We we love you guys and keep keep the donations coming. But like I said, please, no more clothes, no more none of that stuff. And then if you go bring things to the facility, please bring clean stuff, okay? So we was finding dirty laundry, okay, in there, dirty rotten shoes. So that's the reason why I wanna thank um P K Stole for donating one forty cubic um uh roll-off and also um I mean, but anyway. Yeah, they also donated, uh they got a different name, as I used to call them Paradise Blues, but have another name that they're running other, other. But they donate also core partables. Uh, they don't make me say nothing on this guy's stuff, but you know what I mean? We gotta, we gotta, we gotta help the people and help the other people. Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Dudley, for all the help, people.
Single number again.
Yes, yes, eight oh eight. Give me the, I might have the names. Give me one second.
This one number?
Yes, the full number. So her name, gotta bring up. Oh, please, it should be easier, right? Malia.
Call Malia.
From Maui Relief Storage Facility. Eight oh eight, three, four, one, zero, six, two, two. Paul Malia, there we go.
Awesome.
All right, if you guys need.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Anthony, you had an announcement or course? Yeah, go ahead. Yep, community concerns. Go right ahead.
Aloha, still cool up when I, um, I'm gonna just, I have several concerns, but I'm just gonna talk some traffic. You know, so coming home, we have ugly traffic. For Y and I, we have ugly traffic whole place. So I think what we need to do is to get our senators and our council people and the feds to try and get our roads better. And part of this is by the landfill that we have out here, right? And also by the quarry that you folks have out here. So we carry a whole lot of burdens, you know, sort of energy that we carry out here. Free shouldering the burdens as your folks' resolutions indicate for the rest of the island. But what are we doing? We're all being the same rates.
Right.
What we need to do is we need to get these individuals recognize that we need help in education field, we need help in transportation, we need help in all of the different arenas where each community needs to share the burden. Either you have your own landfill or else you pay those communities that have it. And for Y and I, we don't want it.
Yeah.
Right? We house it for long enough, for long enough. So the alternatives that they have is to push it further in because the previous sites that were identified are not suitable anymore, some of them. And even going on to the one mile, that's not sufficient. So we need to get our legislators, locally, state, federal, to work together. And me, when I'm coming home and I see the federal uh the extension, the Makakilo extension, how sad. How heavy that is, that those people have to come all over town. So we need to work together.
Instead of a quarter mile.
And make the rest of the communities that don't shoulder the burdens that we do to pay their fair share, to make things happen that needs to happen on it. Because it also need equal, it needs to be equitable. And that's what we need to impress from all of the different arenas that makes this base state operate.
Okay, we're all over bringing up the concerns. Um, now let's move to uh state monthly reports and we'll start with U S Congressman Ed Case. Is Uncle Nestor with us this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'm here. I hope you can hear me, members of the board. Um, I know that the hour is late and you still have a lot more on your agenda, so I'll make this quick. Uh, in the chat, I put it the link for his third quarter uh neighborhood board report. I'll just skim over it real quickly here for those who do not have access on it uh online. Uh, he's calling for uh students in high school and middle school to uh see if they're willing to uh compete again and come up with a uh an app. His annual congressional app challenge, we're calling on entrance for that. Uh, schools in our first congressional district, obviously. The students must be in middle or high school on November first, twenty twenty-three. Students must either reside or attend school in the first congressional district of Hawaii, urban Honolulu. Students can compete as individuals or in teams of up to four students in which at least two students must reside or attend school in the district. The deadline to apply, register for this congressional app challenge is November first, so we have time. I can call our office, our Honolulu office, yeah, eight oh eight, six, five, zero, six, six, eight, eight. For more information, how to enter, again, middle and high school students who want to enter the congressional app challenge. We're also accepting applications, Mr. Chairman and board members. For those uh young men and women who are interested in perhaps getting a congressional appointment, nomination to any one of our four service academies. Um, the um academy at West Point, Air Force Academy in Colorado, Emergency Marine Academy, as well as the Naval Academy in Annapolis, Maryland. Yeah, again, you must have completed applications to uh the congressman's office no later than Friday, October thirteenth. And for more information on that, again, please call our office at eight oh eight, six, five, zero, six, six, eight, eight. Mr. Chairman and board members, uh as a member of the House Appropriations Committee, obviously, the congressman is very busy trying to make sure that we get all of our appropriations measures in place before the start of the next fiscal, federal fiscal year, October first. Still have a work in progress regarding that. Also, with reference to Maui, we wanna make sure that uh we get uh the emergency supplemental passed, which would uh give more money to the FEMA Emergency Disaster Relief Fund, yeah? Um, sadly, we are running out of money. We are running out of money. So we're watching that very carefully, the feds, you know. Want to make sure that we're gonna be continue to be there for Maui and for the rest of the country. Where there have been disaster declarations, there've been like fifteen other disaster declarations by the president. This was even before Maui and before Tropical Storm Hillary hit the western United States. So uh a lot of people, a lot of states, and we need to take care of and hopefully we can get an emergency supplemental passed so we can get the emergency money still flowing for the people that need it. That's very critical. The uh congressman did have a meeting with the FEMA administrator when she was here. Uh, we, she met with him, he met with her actually in Honolulu just yesterday. He talked about it uh on the news today and will be continuing to talk about it on the news tomorrow morning. For those who wanna sit in and watch that Hawaii news now at seven o'clock tomorrow morning. That is, that's it, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and open to any questions you may have.
Any questions for Congressman Ed's case office? Um, Chair Recognizers, Vice Chair Dr. Kony Dudley, and then we'll go to Mr. Watson afterwards.
I didn't hear what the first thing is that you're uh, there's some kind of a contest or something, what?
Yeah, yeah, uh, Dr. Dudley, this is the congressional app challenge, an app. Uh, young people are really good at developing apps. Um, we have this every year.
Computer app.
Yeah, computer app, yeah. Um, the winner the last two years, running actually have been has been a charter school in Eva. They win, they won the last two years. So we're trying to see if we can get other schools to to challenge uh Eva to come up with a a winning app. So yeah, call my office at again, eight, eight oh eight, six, five, zero, six, six, eight, eight, for more information on the congressional app challenge.
Thank you. I'm going to Mr. Watson.
Mahalo, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Gracia, for being here. I did have a question regarding the FEMA um agents that are uh here responding to the Lahaina disaster. And I saw a report uh in the news today that um some of the FEMA agents were staying in hotels that were costing upwards of a thousand dollars a day. And I wanted to kind of like shed some light on what exactly, you know, the the cost of of this operation. just with FEMA being here. I don't know if you have any insight to that or if you can kind of dispel that, because it was kind of startling to hear that all these FEMA agents, like four hundred agents, and you start to do the math and go like, man, they're paying more for them than the people that are getting the seven hundred dollar check. So, um, is there any insight you can provide for us? Thank you.
Yeah, I saw that same report, uh, Mr. Watson. I'll, I'll be sure to put that question to the FEMA administrator, uh, Mr. Bob Fenton. Uh, we normally sit in on those meetings every day, so I'll put the question to him. I also want to put the question to him about whether or not, uh, they will continue to, um, search for remains, not just in the area that's been heavily impacted in Lahaina Town. But I also saw a story on the news today that they were searching the waters of Lahaina, yeah? Which I thought they weren't going to do that, but apparently they still are. So, yeah, I have, I have some questions to ask Mr. Fenton the next time I sit in on a FEMA meeting. I'll be sure to keep yours in mind.
All right, mahalo. Okay, um, Chair recognizes Dr. Tony Dudley.
Uh, Nestor, I just want to tell you that, uh, besides the problem of fire, we're going to have a major problem of hurricane. Today, I was looking at how many hurricane shelters we have. We haven't added any new hurricane shelters in the last year.
Right.
We only have thirty-eight. That will only take half of the people that we expect to need shelters. And we do not have a single shelter for greater than a hurricane category three.
Right.
So, you know, we need Congress to start getting some money together to help us get shelters to save our people. We've done, they, um, they lost seven thousand people in Puerto Rico, but they have hurricanes every year. They were well prepared. We're going to lose a hundred thousand people. You know, we've, we've got, we got to start getting some money to start building shelters for our people because it's just about impossible to get them to get their houses strong enough to withstand a hurricane. Thank you.
Thank you.
This Dr. Dudley quite aware, and when I was in office, we used to fight to see if we can get any kind of local funding to build shelters here. I seem to recall that, that issue very well. So, yes, we'll bring that up with the FEMA people and make sure that we work with our county and state partners, yeah? Because we need their help to try to make sure they can identify those areas that need the critical shelters, yeah? For the people that you mentioned, uh, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Um, one thing more, um, Uncle Nestor, is that if you could check with, uh, uh, check on the fact of what we can do in order to get resources from the federal government for the area of Kalailoa, particularly for the lands that haven't been fully transferred from the federal government to the state or to the city or county. Like, because some of the lands are still in the process of being transferred and nobody's maintaining them. So is there a possibility for us to look into resources from the federal government side? Because technically, they're still holding on to it because the other side never receive them. Um, to be able to get resources, particularly for wildfire mitigation. Um, would you check in to see what's viable?
We'll work with our partner, Congresswoman Tukura. Um, with the last reapportionment, Kalailoa fell into her jurisdiction. But we'll work with her, uh, to see, uh, we can address your concern, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. And one more question from Senator Cravella.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, your question, other areas that the city has or from the Navy? Are there law fielding, just have to show up and say, no, this is the truth, guys. Since she been in there, she never had any meetings with the Navy. We tried to get her to say she don't want it. So ACDA, eh, eh, can they go over more line homes?
Right.
That's, that's what we want. But I think Kalailoa is too far. She don't know where is Kalailoa, I don't know. Anyway, um, you see, but hey.
Yes, sir.
What, um, Congressman to do is to really go, this is not no place else in the world. Lahaina is very sacred for everybody that goes there, live there. This is what you guys need to do. If you guys want to give that money, a lot of money, billions of dollars to FEMA, make sure they complete their job, but they didn't do that in Katrina. People are still houseless, hopeless, and bums because it was left behind by FEMA. And that is sad, not to the, because there was that call from the federal government. And they gotta stop staying in there, because they should did, but they don't in the ash, so they can understand how bad it is for the people there. Other one was, how come FEMA, this is FEMA now, if you don't give this, um, and I'll talk to, uh, Mr. Big, uh, uh, piece. Their colleague went to the mainland, yeah, or continent, asking them to follow local vendors here to put in one bid for toilets, supplies, and other machinery. Put in one bid with them, they come put them together and give to FEMA. Why is FEMA not talking to the local people on the island who told them they never have enough restrooms? Now they call a vendor here, who's one of the largest vendors to put in a bid. Why are they bypassing the local economy, giving these vendors? So now, if I'm that vendor in the mainland or continent, get the toilets for fifty dollars, I will sell it to FEMA for one hundred fifty dollars.
Right.
That's what's gonna happen to the money, Mr. That's what I'm trying to talk about. We're gonna lose the money because we get greedy, greedy people out there. They're not worried about our people in Lahaina. They're worried about that greedy money that FEMA gonna get from you guys. Please do me a favor, tell those greedy pages to take a hike and take care of our local people and our local vendors here. Don't go to another vendor in the continent. Thank you.
Another good question to put to Mr. Fenton, Senator, about trying to keep the money in local hands, keep the land in local hands, as they've been saying, yeah?
People are like, yes, yes.
Right, so I can try and see, uh, if we can, if there were efforts made to try to get local vendors to make the supplies that are necessary for the people of Lahaina. That's a good question. I'll put it to him.
Mahalo.
Go ahead.
Hi, mahalo, um, mahalo, I mean, it's fifty right now. So along the same lines of what the senator was saying, we all know that you need to buy local. If we don't buy local, we continue to buy outside. That's what causes our people to leave. So this should have been a no-brainer action from our local authorities, even from our congressional representatives. We should need to be reminded of this by our community, but sometimes we do need these reminders. But I'm actually here more so regarding the excess military lands that have not been, uh, transferred over. After the federal government, the next in line is the Department of Hawaiian Homelands.
That's right, that's right.
So, Hawaiian Homelands Department is not made whole because we know that there are still lands that are being utilized, whether it be by the federal government, the state, or the county. So we need these assessments and we need to not bypass the Department of Hawaiian Homelands and the governor and our congressional legislation, the folks or legislators. We need you folks to allow the department to serve the beneficiaries. That's what they're there for. The Department of Hawaiian Homelands is not to serve the whole fake state or everybody, just like the Office of Hawaiian, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. It serves a certain group of the population for political reasons. It's not a racial. So again, remind me the proper order in sequence of the process of transferred lands. The federal government is occupying too much lands, and we want all the lands to be remediated before it's transferred back. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Thank you. Thank you for sharing your, your thoughts.
Yes, thank you, Uncle Nestor. Appreciate you being here and working with the rest of the congressionals. Uh, my, my question, request to you is also for all of the rest of our congressionals to work together regarding how we can actually get resources to address fire mitigation in the federal lands that have yet to be transferred. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Right now, um, Aloha community, we're at nine PM. We do have an hour left, um, but we have quite an agenda still. So, um, let's see if we can, um, be very tight on our conversation and requests so we can get to the presentations, a couple of city lights and board business tonight, including Bill thirty-nine. So with that, let's invite Congressman Woman's Jill Tukura's representative, if they're online. Okay, not hearing any at this time. Uh, we're gonna go to Governor Josh Green's representative. Is Uncle Gordon Pang with us? Well, this is awesome. There's two down already. Very good. Let's go. Ho Highways Division DOT, is Uncle Henry Kennedy with us? Great, now let's go to State Senator Mike Gabbard. Is Johnna B. with us this evening? Awesome. See, everybody's paying attention. I said nine o'clock and now we're going, going forward. State Senator Smale Shimo Bokoro, uh, is Patrice with us? Okay, um, and I do see, um, with us, uh, State Representative Diamond Garcia, so please come, Representative.
Well, the board members, thank you. I'll be quick, because you know there's a lot on the agenda. Uh, just an update regarding wildfires, since that's a big top of mind right now. This, uh, not the, not this last Monday, but the previous Monday, there was a pretty big fire that broke out near the crop center.
Yes.
Kapolei, left the capital and you can see the black smoke from town coming down. So I contacted HFP, they were told that, uh, some of the farmers had reached out. So there's some farms currently still there owned by a lone farms between the crop center and the element housing project in, uh, Waki. And it seems like that was probably caused by a cigarette or so, but that flared up. And I had at least two people call our office terrified. Just less than one week prior to this, uh, behind a birch to grabs. People were definitely, um, alert and thought, ah, what was going on? So fire mitigation is super, it's a super important. We did contact Hawaii Homelands because they do plan to build homes out there and, um, the dredging company is out there currently. So we're asking, in the meantime, until they actually construct homes, so please tear down or remove the brush out there that's near homes. And, um, I do have a statement on the back page regarding Lahaina. And then also some quick updates in Kapolei, the crosswalk near Kaupala, uh, homestead, near Pua, you know, close street. They talked to HFP C, they're on it, but they do plan to work with Hawaii Homelands to have something installed very soon, then less than, than two months without. We got a call last week from someone, the office, saying that there, uh, somebody was recently almost hit in that area again, because people definitely crossed their day in the morning. And so definitely need to have a crosswalk there. Uh, that's pretty much it for the update this month. Any questions with the board?
Any questions from fellow board members from the community at large? Thank you, Representative. We have a question from Senator Cravilla. Almost, almost.
I know you already talked about this and I wanted him to have the support of the Huron Village, uh, area that, um, the Department of Interior never worked out good, but the jurisdictions to his Hawaiian homes. So that area that always flare up by Kamakana Lee and Huron Village, you need to cut, not push back. You gotta get rid of the grubs because Huron Village is just as old, probably just as old or older than Lahaina.
Right.
And those guys, the same thing that you did, you was, all along to be where they see the fire.
Right.
And just need you to help me call some Department of Transportation and, uh, City's office and, uh, Hawaiian homes. Okay, they're listening. Uh, and then, uh, cut the grass or give a doza, and I'm gonna push everything and Kamakana Lee is packing up.
Okay, thank you. Um, hold on, for Representative, okay, come.
Sure, that's your area, or not? There is a big concern from, uh, Kapolei, Home Force, that's very, very tend to qualify parkways. I've seen, in fact, I have those kids, um, walking, there, there's a lot of people walking, biking. Is there a plan to put like a sidewalk there? Especially because there's west of wall, there's kids, and they're walking on the road.
Yeah. So, our office got an email this last week, both myself and my dad, or they're asking for a bike lane. There's no bike, they're going to go across the intersection, not a lot of fun. There are often folks who walk in at three, two, and at night, there is some homeless that need that.
Right, yeah.
Right. So, you know, that is always a margin for fires, also them are stomping out there. So we don't want homes that area hard, but definitely working like David does. Sidewalk at the middle. Now, some of the, the university plant from San.
Right.
Rail stations opening, there'll be a lot more traffic.
Right.
So definitely a sidewalk and like that.
Mahalo, Representative, we appreciate it. Now let's go to Representative Kanani Suzo. She with us online? Okay, no worries. She was here, but, um, she had to leave. So now see, Representative Darius Kila is there online? Okay, and now we go to Hawaii Community Development Authority.
Uh, same thing, on earlier had to be.
No problem. See, everybody just wants to make room so we can get to the presentation for this evening. Come on down, Samantha Sun from Culture Day, our specialist in Parks and Recreation, Kapolei City Lights Festivities Presentation, okay?
We'll stand, because there's like a bunch of.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Or you can grab, you can sit, you can stand, no problem.
Hello, my name is Samantha Sun, I'm with the Department of Parks Recreation. Um, I'm hoping to put together the Kapolei City Lights, we're scared, we're a little bit ahead of the ball game at this time. So, um, we're here to present and ask for the support of the different board for this event. Um, I have with me, Mr. Alex Ching, who's cool, explain more about the parade and then Kalais Shalener, who'll talk about the block party. But the event itself will be happening on Saturday, December ninth, twenty twenty-three, right here at Kapolei Hali. And, um, actually, the parade will start over at Fort Barrett. So the parade will start at six PM from there, and the block party is from five PM to nine PM. Break here in this area, so all of Hawaii, Ubohe Street, um, we all backed up, so we'll explain, but.
Okay. Mahalo, thank you. Just tell them when to click.
Aloha, Alex Ching, I'm here to talk about the parade route. Um, I hope a lot of you got to experience it last year after your three-year break. Um, we are proposing the same route as last year. Um, this was the preferred route from Honolulu Police Department. Uh, it's a shorter route, we only kind of brought out one neighborhood, Mihaana neighborhood. And in discussions with them, when we did our community outreach, um, they requested that we keep uh, exit open at all times, which we were able to accommodate. And we also had multiple breaks within the parade route so that the cars waiting to get into the neighborhood, we'd be able to get into. We tried to minimize the impact to the block and they, in fact, they weren't blocking at all. Had, uh, many opportunities for them to exit all the time and come in. So the route, uh, if you folks aren't familiar, we started at Kapolei High School of Fort Barrett Road. We turned left onto Kapolei Parkway and it's a straight shot down to Kapolei Hali. We passed, um, Kamakana Street and ended at Kiala Kau. So we do community outreach to the neighborhood associations, the businesses in the area. We send crews out with notices, with all the information. Uh, we plan on doing the same. I look for.
So how do folks who want to be in the parade participate?
Yeah, about this guy, so I'll give all this, uh, about the, I'm gonna give you, well, emails.
It's a matter of respect and those in the station.
Well, actually, you can actually become a test, and then I'll, I'll direct you to the parade place.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so the block party is being timed tonight. It will, I hope that's, you know, uh, um, twice and come. Um, same like last year, we're following the city street. Um, we're gonna have a different setup with last year, the crowd was kind of right in front, so we're gonna try to sustain a little bit more up on, on the side. And then the vendors on Kamakana.
Thank you. Awesome. Any questions? Okay, last slide.
So next slide, it's actually just our, I'm, I'm, and then I'll push the other. Well, that was the key. I'll be showing community for them, so we're gonna have the outreach and, so letting the businesses around here that will be affected go.
And last slide?
Last slide, I have, so if you need more information on Kapolei City Lights event, exactly the way that that bit, they, um, else you can reach it. Well, Kapolei City Lights. else you can reach it, well, Kapolay City Lights, you can find our website. And my contact information is there on the slide. And if you have any more questions or want to participate, call in an email or copy.
Awesome. Are there any questions from the board members around the Kapolay City Lights? Just a big mahalo from myself. Well, you guys are definitely ahead of the game from the last time. So this is awesome. Good job. Okay, question from the communities.
Well, we're trying to get permission to use Kapolay High School parking lot. So I'll go Fort Barrett. Heading Malka, turn left onto Kapolay Parkway, straight shot down.
Okay, so you guys can start from the school towards the mall.
To here.
Yeah, we're here. The reason why I say is because you guys did the school to over here. I know you guys have, it's a long walk, but I'm not sure if you guys are asking these guys. Because it's a night parade. It's a night parade.
Right.
I think the suggestion for same scheme is not have people walking. I'll tell you why. When the parade is almost done, we still have people walking. They're strange, they're walking. So when I asked what they wanted, right, they didn't want right. So that's why I said the parade, if you guys don't put the walkers, it's too far for some people to walk. It's a far, far walk. That's the reason why we don't do night parades and we don't make it that long walk. It's a lot, a lot of walking. And a lot of them think they can do it, but they cannot. And you guys are really celebrating at the holiday, the people's school was walking.
Right.
That's one of the concerns. So just, it's a thinking with a grain of salt, whatever you guys like to. But if something happened, then you guys can assume that goes ahead.
Thank you. Questions or concerns from online? I see Uncle Ed Warner. Ed, do you have a question for the?
Hey, aloha, aloha. Hey, I just wanna, you guys can hear me. I just wanna say a big mahalo to those organizers that set up the Kapolay Parade. In 2017, I got invited to the parade. I brought about 300 people. I brought a lowboy trailer. We decorated the trailer. Kalana's passing was about a year or so. I brought awareness, I brought MAD, HPD. UH football, UH baseball players came out that year. And Kapolay High School and we had some Nanakuli High School came out. And we brought, I mean, I dished out candies. We had 300 people walking. It was a far walk for me because I went walk and I know what Vavella talking about. Yeah, the part with that was trying to get these guys back to the car that was at Kapolay High School. But I did a pretty good and malarmed him for what he's doing. It's a good thing. It's nighttime and it was this awesome. I mean, I decorated that lowboy trailer, brand new trailer, brand new truck at that time, Ed Maria, my brother. And you know, we pull it off on a short notice and I just like mahalo, you guys, for keep the tradition going and be safe out there. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, or affirmations? Very nice. Thank you so much for doing the presentation and let us know how we can kakuas as you continue to move forward. We look forward to updates in the future. Hey, gang. Now we are finally to board business. We have a number of items tonight. The first, a board representative to the city city advisory committee for Ompo. Didn't we do this last time? So yes, we did, but I'm convinced one second that wasn't actually installed yet. So to avoid anybody actually complaining or filing some complaint against us, we're gonna do it again. Does that make sense? Okay, so is there a motion to have Uncle Frank Canario to be the board representative to the, to the CAC of Ompo? It's been, it's been moved by Dr. Kyani Dudley and second by Uncle Mick Ferrar. Is there any discussion from the board members? Anyone wishing to testify from the public on where not Uncle, Uncle Frank Canario should go and be a representative? Hearing none. Okay, no discussion, no testimony, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say a ole. Any abstentions, they can allow. The chair calls it unanimous. We're finished with one. We're finished with one.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Okay, Frank, you already got it. You can't, you can't not get it now. But go right ahead.
There, there can be two more representatives, I believe. The Transportation Chair Mick Ferrara and Thad Sprague, did he volunteer to be on the Transportation Committee? I could, I could give Ompo both their names as alternates.
That'd be good.
Oh, yeah. So, so for Uncle Mick Ferrar and who's the second? And Thad Sprague. Okay, so it's been recommended from our representative. Since it's not on the agenda, okay. It is on the agenda. Excuse me. We wrote it broadly enough. So we're gonna do alternates for Mick Ferrar and Thad Sprague.
Chair.
As alternates to Ompo. Is there a motion?
Chair.
It's been moved by Dr. Kyani Dudley, second by Mick Ferrar. Is there any discussion from board members?
I think there.
Oh, I, I see Thad. Yes, right at that.
I respectfully decline. Thank you very much.
Okay, so even if we get him on, he's not gonna go. So is it okay to, to amend the motion? So it's just Uncle Mick? Okay, it's been amended. So the chair heard it was a withdrawal of the original motion and then now Uncle Kyani Dudley said he moved for just Mick. And then Uncle Mick said he second. So it's a withdrawal and then now there's a new motion. Again, any discussion from the board members? Anyone wishing to testify from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say a ole. Any abstentions, they can allow. Yep. Congratulations by unanimous assent. I'll refer as an alternate. Great. Now, let's go to board business, Bill 39, which also then reflects on Resolution C and D. So the chair will provide some context first before we then go into public testimony. For Bill 39, it is before the Honolulu City Council. According to the Bill Conference Draft One, the purpose of the ordinance is to establish a real property tax exemption for certain real property located near an active landfill. And the pros of the bill itself, it clarifies that right now they're focusing on landfill. A facility designated by the city solely for the disposal of a construction and demolition waste. What that pragmatically means is that we're talking about the PVT landfill in Nanakuli, not Waimea Nalo Gulch. Okay, so what's happening in Nanakuli? And then they're clarifying that it's a one-mile radius for a homeowner tax exemption. What exactly the exemption is, is unspecified. So if someone wishes to actually comment on that, it's, it's basically authorizing a homeowner tax exemption for those people within a mile radius of the construction and demolition landfill, which is currently PVT, but could be something else in the future if there's another landfill slated. And the other note for Bill 39 is that there's an allowance that post-closure, so, so while it's operating, you get an exemption within a mile, but after the thing pow, for 30 years, because that's how long you're supposed to monitor landfills, they're still gonna get the exemption. Okay, so that's what Bill 39 in essence. Is there any questions that I can technically answer regarding the bill before we accept testimony? Chair recognizes Vice Chair Dr. Kyani Dudley.
What is the exemption? Is it, they don't pay any income and any real estate tax? What, what is it that they're not paying?
Real property tax.
They're not paying any at all if they live within one mile. Is that correct?
No, it is not clear whether or not it is actually 100% or not, because I think the way it is written, that it is still up to the creation of whatever the exemption amount is. So I'm saying for a homeowner tax exemption, there's a certain amount or for Department of Fine Homelands is for $300. So it has not been specified what the amount is. They're just creating the, creating the vehicle for an exemption for real property. Any other questions that I can answer? And if I'm wrong and somebody knows, otherwise, please let me know.
My only concern about it is, is that it's within one half mile of an active landfill or waste energy facility. You have Ko'olina right there, which is a pretty high property tax base. And then what keeps people who decide to move in next to the airport from wanting an impact credit for nuisance caused by the sound of planes? In other words, if you live in the area and that's been there for several years, I don't know if it really benefits a lot of the people who would like, let's say, live in Monakaia Halei, which probably really need the tax break. And you have a large amount of people who actually live in Ko'olina who's gonna benefit from the tax break.
Okay, so Uncle Mick, right now, let's focus on Bill 39, the resolution that you are talking about. So when we had this conversation before, six months ago, when the state legislature was reviewing whether or not to actually urge the city in Konaia, Honolulu to provide the real estate tax exemption, our board was considering two miles. And the reason why we were considering two miles back then was because the public health data for impact on landfills, we found out, was four miles. So that means everybody's impacted up to four miles away. But then, because of those concerns by Dr. Dudley and yourself, before, we put it back down to half a mile because the state already set the threshold. They said everybody, they said buffer zone, not supposed to have people, period, in this area. So the baseline should be half mile, whether or not it's higher or whatnot. That's the reason why the resolution speaks to communities of impact. And the state resolutions actually say that, deem impacted by landfilling. So that means waste processing, the trucks going over there, everything impacted. That's different conversation. But right now, Bill 39, which is come out of first reading, is actively moving forward. Everyone in the council has voted yes. Our council member has voted yes with reservations so far. Is that we're discussing whether or not to kaku those people in Nanakuli and Wailei within a mile. We never set the mile. Council and set the mile. State won't ask for half mile because they think nobody should be within half mile of Opa'ala. And our previous conversation was two mile, but then the question came up about what about the people in Ko'olina that already get air conditioning and all of this other stuff? So we're saying half mile came back because when we looked at the maps, the half mile didn't push into the whole Ko'olina community, went up to just the, just the ones right. When you go off over the pass, it's just the houses on the right-hand side. Everybody else not covered in the half mile. So it's the Kahae PowerPoint people, them over there, and then potentially some of the Honakaia Halei and then Upper Makakilo potentially, depending on how you considering the half mile, which is again, that's not our, that's not our decision. Because the city already, the bill says half mile.
So half mile, there's only some of Honakaia Halei, not all.
Correct. That's the reason why. So remember, Mickey Allen, so half mile is some of Honakaia, not all. That's the reason why our resolution speaks to communities of impact. Our argument is, in the resolution, Kapolay get H Power. Everybody go put their Opa'ala over there, fly ash coming out from H Power, gotta go through Kapolay, going past Makakilo, going past Honakaia Halei, going up to Waimea Nalo Gulch and before went to PVT, so pass Nanakuli. So that's why our resolution says, community of impact, we think is Honakaia Halei, Makakilo and Kapolay. But the two resolutions, which we'll get to later, one is for the tax exemption to include it, which is different than this one. This one already going, which is including waste to energy. And then, and the impact of waste to energy, half mile around that, half mile around Waimea Nalo Gulch, which then would include us, but is not currently, because this one is just about the C and D. And then the, the, the second resolution is recognizing that we like protect the homeowners and people live there, but the whole community impacted by this. And that's the reason why we're asking for community compensation. They call it host benefits and was like, we don't like postal. You heard people in the community already. We don't like post this, but as long as you can put them on us, we like be compensated. And not to the individual homeowner. We wanted to go to the community like how they did under, under Mupi Handamans administration. They will give us resources and they will help out and that was awesome. But then they forgot that they kept dishonoring their promise because they're supposed to be Pa'ala Waimea Nalo Gulch in 2008 and it's 2023. So we overdue for some compensation. So just to provide the context for what the resolutions are versus what the bill is before we take testimony. Any other questions of clarification from the board members? Dr. Kyani Dudley, go ahead.
I just want to make it clear now. We're talking in the bill about PVT.
That's correct.
And when you're talking about property for a while, you're saying it goes right up to, from PVT, it goes all the way to Ko'olina?
No, that was only for the resolution that Uncle Mick was talking about for Waimea Nalo Gulch, which is not in the bill. That's our resolution saying we should include the people around half mile because the state said nobody should be living there. So how come they still living there? And if they're living there, how will we help them? Either move or get compensated. Okay, any other questions between the three? They're all related, so we just want to make sure we all stay on the same page because people are gonna start talking about stuff, right?
The communities.
Yes.
Communities of impact, how is that determined?
So community.
That this community is impacted.
So Mickey Allen's question, who determines community of impact? I would argue the communities that getting impacted should tell their legislators that they're getting impacted. And that's what we're gonna do in the resolution if we pass it. We say we getting impacted, but we're not saying anything about the other communities that are impacting. We're saying this is how we're getting impacted in our resolutions. And also the resolutions that we pass also recognize the plight of those in Nanakuli and Wailei. Okay, any other questions? Okay, with that, let's take public testimony first on Bill 39 or any of the resolutions, because they're overlap. And we can start online and then we're gonna come back in person and we're gonna start with Dr. Yes. Dr. Kyani Dudley, yes.
I would appreciate it if we could have testimony only on Bill 39 and then vote. I, I think it's very confusing for me.
Sure.
And I think it's very confusing for.
That's what the chair is planning on doing, is to take testimony on each, but if the speakers wish to speak on all three.
No.
They can.
No. I, what I'm saying is.
Thank you, Dr. Kyani Dudley. Dr. Kyani Dudley, appreciate what you say, but the speakers can speak to the issues that they wish to when we open a public testimony because they're all related. But the board will be voting on Bill 39 and whether or not we support it as is or with amendments. And we're gonna start with Lea Ken.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Mahalo.
Doctor Ken.
Mahalo, Chop Harris. Aloha. So my name is Lea Ken. I am a current resident in Makakilo. And prior to moving here, I grew up and resided in the Aupua of Luololei. Works specifically within the Mohiihi and Aoyang Homestead Road area. And I lived there for the majority of my life and I understand firsthand the immense impact that the presence of PVT landfill and related waste processing operations has had on the lives of the residents, especially the native Hawaiian population. I want to express my unwavering support for Bill 39, as well as the two resolutions that have been presented alongside it. The measure, the measures outlined in the bill hold the promise of bringing much-needed relief and justice to the affected community, which have long borne the burdens of environmental challenges stemming from the landfill and other waste management activity. And the proposals put forth in the Bill 39 and accompanying resolutions aim to achieve critical goals, which will offer much-needed support to individuals and families who have long endured the adverse effects of these activities. And far too long, our communities have suffered from the consequences of environmental racism, leading to diminished quality of life, decreased property values and a range of health issues. And we must not stand idle any longer while we, along with our fellow residents, face elevated risks of health problems from respiratory issues to birth defects as a result of living in close proximity to the landfills and waste transportation ways. So I implore you wholeheartedly to support Bill 39 and the resolutions that accompany it. These measure, measures present a significant opportunity to rectify historical injustices and pave the way for equitable treatment and better living conditions for all. And as an advocate for environmental justice and the well-being of my fellow residents, I'm confident that support for these measures will send a strong message that we value the health and lives of every member of our community. And so let us work together to ensure that future generations can enjoy cleaner air, safer neighborhoods and improved overall quality of life. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Dr. Lea Ken. Is there any questions for the testifier from board members? Is seeing none. Now we'll take one from in person. If there is one willing to wish to testify in person, come. Board Member Jermaine Myers from Nanakuli. Elina, welcome.
Board members, oh, chair, oh, thanks, chair.
Board members, all the chairs, all the chairs. I'm from the Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board, and I came to share with you, we had taken a vote last week at an August meeting regarding Bill thirty-nine. And we wholeheartedly, we had a full conversation about it with our community members, but also our board members. Eight of our nine board members are native Hawaiian. Six out of the eight live on homestead land, two at Princess Kahano, and four at Nanakuli Maile Homestead, where there's thousand fifty homestead lots. PVT is between Princess Kahano and Nanakuli Homestead, and that was brought up by Ed Warner before, and it's smacked out in the middle. We wholeheartedly opposed it. We voted in opposition unanimously. All nine members voted unanimously in opposition of it, in the way that is currently written. So the way that is currently written is a one-mile radius, number one. The way that is currently written, it's only specifically to PVT landfill, and not the impact of both landfills, Waimeanalo Gulch and PVT.
Right.
The way that it's written is that it's full exemption of tax. That's something that has not happened before, where you don't have to pay taxes. And the equal for that one-mile radius, the amount that the city go lose in tax revenue is eighteen million dollars. We on the Ma'inei Coast, we just struggled to try to get city colony parks to, you know, and homeless suites, and, you know, for our, our police station to be pleased and sufficient police force. So we're like, eighteen million dollars, we don't, the city colony doesn't operate in a silo. The operation of the whole budget affects all departments. And so if you take only eighteen million, you know, it's gonna come from somewhere. So we looked at that as well. And then, I have personally called Chair, so we were shocked because it wasn't our city council member that introduced this bill. It was Chair Tommy Waters. I called Chair Tommy Waters office, and I asked to speak to him about why did they introduce it, what is his accomplishment out of it? But more so, I wanted to know, what report, health report proves that PVT affects people's, affects their health and how? Because someone had told me, oh, someone's auntie had passed away. But I know that, that auntie, she was a smoker most of her adult life, and she also drank Waha. So I was like, how do you definitively say that was PVT, and she lived, she moved there eight years ago? Rest, people have been living there for years, like my auntie, three of my aunties and uncles' families lived in that area. And they never died, my uncle died in the late eighties, and that was, you know, out of his own health condition. So how do you, so I asked them, what report that says it's not eating fast food, high cholesterol, high fat, high sugar? How does it say that it wasn't their smoking, or there are other life types of events that caused the, the health impact? And more so, you're setting a precedence that you're saying, oh, the health that impacted, and so therefore, this entity is affecting this health. Now, what about other city, you know, facilities? I had a expert report and none was provided, none was given. And then, when I look into air pollution, seven hundred reports roadwide have said, if you live in a high-traffic area, next to a high-traffic, it'll affect your health. I live on a, on Nanakuli Avenue, there's four schools, two elementarys and one intermediate, one high school that is above my house. I, I have fifteen hundred students and parents and facility, faculty, staff members, pass by my house every day to go to school, three school days, going and coming home. I was told that that's an impact to my health. So that's just me on Nanakuli Avenue, what about Farrington Highway? So that's the things that I asked Chair Waters office, and if the answers were not provided. So again, we, so what we're concerned about is, and that's our side, PVT has been on open for years. And we've never had any type of exemption for our land tax, like full exemption. And then, we also have, we, sorry, but nobody in Makakilo passes Waimeanalo Gulch to go home. We pass Waimeanalo Gulch every day, we, and those that live in a facility in PVT. So the impact of Waimeanalo Gulch and PVT has been greater on us, but there's no reports that show that Waimeanalo Gulch affects us. When it does, the runoff that goes into the ocean
Can you please wrap up your testimony?
The currents that come to our beaches, right? So the currents that come from Waimeanalo Gulch that go, when they have rain runoff, goes to our beaches, Nanakuli's land, that's where I camp, that's where our family camp and swim. So for those reasons, we opposed it, because we want proof and evidence, because then, we're going to have others, you know, other groups come forward and say, hey, what about the railways, how they're affecting us, I'm on Farrington Highway, how they're affecting me?
Can you please conclude?
What about for us? And so that's the kind of things that we had talked about. So that's for those reasons that we opposed it, and it's not going to be touched, the one-mile radius, it's not going to be touched giving exemption to Nanakuli Homesteaders or to Princess Kahano, so for those reasons, we said that the way that the bill is written right now, eighteen million dollars, we, we didn't support it, so.
Appreciate you, but please, hold on, if there's any questions. Are there any questions for fellow board members? Chair recognizes Dr. Kilni Dali.
So you are from the Nanakuli Board, and you voted against approving Bill thirty-nine, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And everybody on the board voted against approving Bill thirty-nine.
Correct, myself, Bill Paul, I knew, Suma Badi, everybody.
Okay, any other questions from fellow board members? Chair recognizes Mick Ferrer.
So what I'm reading on this bill is that for the DHKTL properties, it would only benefit them three hundred dollars.
No, that's, that's, that's a normal underlying moment, it's three hundred dollars.
Right.
But that's not from the landfill thing, that's just a normal.
So, but what the landfill is going to do is, it could also include the landfill at a later date. And the tax exemption would be one hundred percent within a one-mile radius. And it would continue for thirty years even after it closes.
So one year is eighteen million dollars for a tax exemption, and one of the young ladies in the community, I can remember, she was a burner. She stated that she's worried that when we do give a hundred percent exemption, people are going to not want to buy those homes. Because it's like, oh, they don't have to pay taxes, I want to buy those homes. So they're going to outfit other people, because for thirty years, they're not paying land tax.
Right, well, and I live, I live up on top of Makakilo, and so I get all the stuff that comes over the hill, and I get my film all over my windows, and my cars get dirty, and I'm not within a mile. So it's coming over the hill with the, with the wind
Waimeanalo Gulch.
From, from there, and also, I think probably the, the E-power down below, that it blows off the ocean. So there's, there's a bigger group of people that are, they're wound by it, and then plus two, there's going to be other community groups who are going to want the same thing, for sewage treatment plants. Let's say you live down in Eva Beach, you got that, that wonderful, the honey, honey plant there, that you got a smell to go through, and then how about the convenience center where people drop off their garbage? I drive to town every day and smell the convenience center that's down below, you know, over by the, the National Guard thing. I mean, you know, there's other situations where you have high traffic, possibly for dust, I mean, where is it going to end once we do one? Everybody else is going to say, well, heck, I live by an airport, I live by a convenience center, I live by a sewage treatment plant, I'm affected. I, the way it's written, I'm, I'm just not big in
The consensus among
Hold on, there was no question asked, let me ask the board member, can you clarify a question that you wish to ask of the testifier? Because we have other testifiers wishing to testify.
Right, well, I'm just wondering, my question is that, you know, is this going to open the door for more groups to want the same thing at hundred percent, practically?
You can go away and answer that question.
So that was brought up, it's like, if it's going to open up for, for air pollution, highways, and other dust pollution. And so what we said was, if that's the case, then we want all of nine-six-seven-nine-two to be taxed at hundred percent, because of the impact of Waimeanalo Gulch and Waimeanalo Gulch. You know, like, if you're gonna, if you're gonna target something, it's like, how do you say that it stopped at the one mile, when he's saying that
Right.
On the other side, Waimeanalo Gulch, miles away, that he's getting impacted by the dust. So how do you land it at one mile? And so it's like, for us, we're like, we're on nine-six-seven-nine-two, because when we drive past Waimeanalo Gulch, we get rocks that fly by our car, when those trucks are coming out.
Right.
And most of the time, they're like, the thing is flapping, and dust is on your car.
Right. Okay, thank you so much. Are there any other questions for our fellow board member from Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board? Kaseenah, thank you for coming out, and thank you for clarifying that you guys are opposed to this for the number of reasons, including the fact that the entire zip code should be benefiting from the tax break, and not just those in one-mile radius. Mike, okay, is there a testifier online? I see, Uncle Ed Warner.
Hey, aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Ed Warner again. I've been in Nanakuli for sixty-plus years. Dad live alongside, our backyard is PVT's front yard. I've been there all my life, I, I live, you know, this bill that I trying to help to benefit a lot of my family members and a lot of my friends, I was raised, born and raised in that area. I, I, I live away from the, the one mile, but, you know, this, this to clarify things that I do for my community. And, and when Jermaine comes up, she, she's not being affected by the landfill. She was one of the biggest supporters of the land, of the expansion of the landfill. Jermaine was one of them. You guys representative Diamond Garcia was one of them, and Patty Torura. I came in, I formed a coalition, and I brought hundreds of guys in that never know what was happening. So what, what, I'm a true Hawaiian, I'm a true Kanaka, I don't beat around the bush, I don't lie, I, I, I come out and I, I say what, what is right. I'm here to fight for the kupunas that cannot fight anymore. I'm here to stand up for my kekis and, and our childrens that cannot fight. That's what I'm here for. Jermaine was one of the main ones, she has a lot of family working that landfill. Remember, this landfill that came in nineteen, nineteen eighty-seven to our backyard. It's supposed to be affordable houses back there, but what? We get trash from all over.
Mr. Warner, hold on to your testimony, we'll hold your time, because someone's
Okay.
Order and decorum, order and decorum.
Okay.
Order and decorum. Like, Mr. Warner is entitled to share his opinions. Order and decorum. It's like, no one interrupted you when you did your testimony to correct quote-unquote the facts that they disagree with. Is that not the case? Did not anyone interrupt you? Did, did anyone, no, answer my question. Did anyone interrupt you during your testimony? Did anyone interrupt you during your testimony? Thank you. So please, order and decorum, everyone here, at Kapolei Makakilo Neighborhood Board, everyone's entitled to their opinion. Good, bad, ugly, factual, not factual, why? Because we're a community forum. Because why? Because we're thinking human beings, so we got to discern from what we hearing, whether or not it's the case. Now, if you want to challenge something after the fact, feel free to actually communicate to the board, but you believe what was testified was not correct. And this is for everyone, because if not, we not going to hear each other, right? But, I'll give you the point, that Mr. Warner did bring your name up three times, because when he was hitting the fourth, which is our protocol, we remind members to speak to their experience and not to others. Here, okay? So Mr. Warner, you was on number three, talking about Auntie Jermaine. So, speak to your experience other than others.
Yes, entitled, she has a lot of family there, I understand, understand, you know, we got work there. But my, my, my thing is, when is enough is enough? You know, when, when, when you look at the oversea, and, and you look about our board, now we're getting a change of new board members, right? This landfill was actually contributing to their nonprofit. No wonder these guys was around for the amount of time they was around. We saying when is enough is enough. Why can't the, the city take care of the people that was impacted? Jermaine never come from Mohiihi Street. I don't know if she had family, that's what she said, but this whole thing is, I came from that street.
Mr. Warner, hold on, you already called out Auntie Jermaine, that's the fourth time. So please, keep your testimony about yourself or your experience, mahalo.
Okay, that's good. Okay, this is a little bit what I do for my community, right? Kalana's Law, I got Iggy to sign it. Alzheimer's, me and my boy, with the help of a lot of people out there, we got allocated a million dollars. The dental Medicaid, I fought for that. I supported the minimum wage, and that's the stuffs I bring. When I see something is not right in my community, Chair, I'm going to speak, and I'm, 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 I'm going to confront them. What is right is right, and what is wrong is wrong. We got kupunas live in my community, and, and is dying, is dying. She look at, you know, first, people out there cannot determine if it's, you know, I, I, I came out, I, I fought the expansion of this landfill to not to come over, to stay in my community for the next hundred years. I fought for it. I standing up for all people in Nanakuli. I cannot believe this neighborhood board not supporting the cleaning of the canal, not supporting the people to give them a break. A lot of guys that live on the outside of this community, away from that landfill, is, don't know how it is. I mean, I don't see anybody working for a PVT lives along there, this house is open. They're not living in that community. It hurts me to, to come out and say the truth, because the truth is the truth, the truth going to set you free. And I'm all about my community, whatever I can do for my community, I do, you know. And when you wrong, you wrong. And, and when you right, you right. And that's just the way, why we got to accept everybody's Opa'ala from the state? Why we got to get the biggest homeless population? Why everything sits down right into Nanakuli?
Mr. Warner, can you kindly wrap up your testimony, please?
So I, I'm here in big support of getting those guys the tax break that they need. And, and I, I can tell you from deep down in my heart, these guys deserve it. For people who don't understand, hey, if, if Waimeanalo like get involved, maybe our city councilwoman can make another bill for Waimeanalo. I mean, that's, that's where I stand, this bill is going, it's moving, let's get it through for the people. Hey, you know, fighting this landfill, Makana, I brought out, what, almost thirteen thousand supporters, right? PVT brought out thirteen hundred. Who likes the landfill in their backyard, raise your hand, because I can tell you right now, nobody likes it. If it's
Thank you, Mr. Warner.
And, you know, I just want to say mahalo, and, and, and for you guys listening me out, because, you know, the truth going to set you free. That's, that's all I'm, I'm, I'm here to, to, to help my community. If I was in Makakilo, I would help you guys too, but I get family in Makakilo, mahalo.
Okay, ready? Time.
Aloha.
Okay, appreciate the testimony. Are there any questions from fellow board members for the testifier, Ed Warner? The only question I have, Uncle Ed, is can you, can you repeat how many people in the community you worked with in order to actually ensure for the buffer zone law?
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand.
Compared to PVT is thirteen hundred.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any questions from board members? You see none, we're going to go to a testifier in person. Senator Kirk Villa, go ahead.
Hey Chair, first of all, I'm in support of the bill. Now, I urge the board members to read, read into the bill, so you can understand that the Senate incurred resolution, almost seven passed unanimously in the House and the Senate. The reason, reason for that is economic and environmental racism. You guys got to understand this, people don't realize, construction and demolition waste landfill is open. No place else have that. Waimeanalo Gulch, they're only taking some of the ash, okay? And they get layers and layers of protection. I'm not saying the brothers from Makakilo don't have a case, but if you have a case, lead on and make your bill. Bring it to the Senate and the House and the council. Don't kill this bill, because you're not getting a fair shake. And how she said, she wants everybody covered, everybody going to be covered? I can see the guys who living there were active, active demolition landfill. PVT was there second to the people. The people that brought in the PVT, right now, you know what PVT used to be? On recycling construction area, not a landfill. But it was cheaper, and we had people, like, board member, whatever the person's name, took a lot of money from PVT to protect PVT as long as she can, and or he can, okay? So PVT came after the Hawaiians and the people that was living there. And you want to know facts, yeah? And we have this whole thing to close PVT, Abbey, Beinberg Clinic in Nanakuli, doctors, nurses came and gave testimony. Nobody will listen. Eczema, respiratory disease, everything, Hawaiian law. Because every single one of my nieces and nephews in Nanakuli homestead had that. And you know what the doctor told them? Not because they was eating sugar or had low pressure. It was an environmental, now the mom and dad don't smoke cigarette. It's an environmental disease that she had, they had, okay? That's another thing. And then another thing too, you gotta understand, nobody here, nobody. And the Nanakuli board, you know what Nanakuli board will shoot them down? They're trying to put everything together, accusing everybody to put them down, okay? I did the community order, they're not gonna put them down. Negative. Yeah, so I'll give you this one. So the fans can report that ten years, ten years around that area of your life is lore, okay? She don't live there. She don't live by PVT, okay? Average for Hawaiian residents, seventy-two by PVT. Eighty-two for Hawaiian, Hawaii, and not by PVT. I'm here to talk about PVT. If you guys get a problem or you guys want something, send it to me. I'd be happy to, or Waimanalo one, or other stuff. But you guys gotta understand, they live, day in and day out, they do not drive through. And what Rocky said, as it is to your health, as it is to your car. A landfill, an active landfill, mind you, was put in somebody's backyard without their permission. They never got the community support, guys. That's why they ask you guys for this support. Health issues, not because they get diabetes and obesity. How racist that were not a native Hawaiian said that. I am appalled to hear that. Some of these diseases, you guys like go look, call up the Wai farm, Nanakuli clinic and Wai nine, and you go ask them how bad that landfill is for that community. They came, I went to all of them, as you know, I went to every one of them. They came testify when I was chair. This PVT landfill was a poison in the community. They broke their promise, they was gonna recycle everything. Right now you go in a backhoe dig, two by fours, cement, steel. It was only supposed to put in there, but they couldn't recycle. But why they gonna pull them out? It's money. I didn't gonna have somebody take them to H Power and burn them. It's money. There's trucks, there labor. They got greedy and they took it on the backs of the community. And that's why I'm appalled and I really appalled of the board members that supported PVT because they was getting money. Okay? Some of the representatives too, the name was mentioned, I haven't mentioned names, they took money from PVT. But I'm asking these stories, we really does an advisory board. You guys never take my chance in Nanakuli on the family's health. As much as the families sign up, it's gonna be a big, a big thing. So like I said, I'm not supporting you guys to do you guys' old bill, you guys' old resolution. Go ahead, I'll be happy to introduce them in the Senate, since it seems like none of you guys, elected officials are here. So I'll do that. I'll hundred percent do that. Don't kill this bill, because it's not for everybody. Because not everybody gotta live in a landfill, that many years, health issues, everything, and they gotta pay. I said these guys don't have good life insurance, I mean, uh, health insurance.
Please wrap up, Senator.
Yeah, I wanna wrap up, she's, all these other guys, oh, wait, we did ten minutes? Anyway, sorry Jermaine, anyway. So moving with this, just saying this, okay guys? It's not about an airport, not about Coolina. If they wanna put one, Coolina now, if you guys this one now. Some of these houses that was still, Waimanalo was there. If I knew that was for me and if I write the problem for me, I wouldn't have bought a house in Coolina. Some places in Makakilo still new. I wouldn't have bought a house in Makakilo. I seen it with a great specific quarry. I seen a quarry there, then I buy my house right next to the quarry. Then I like shut them down because I have respiratory problems. All of this was there before. PVT wasn't. What I'm there, that mountain is more big than the mountain in the back. Honestly, you guys put your guys' toes in those guys' shoes and tell me you guys wouldn't want some kind of compensation.
Why not, Senator?
The final one of us say, eighteen million, she talking about? She never even talked to the finance people at the city. The city said this is durable. And we said the same thing in the state, Senate and the House. That's why we didn't pass the resolution. It's durable. It's not gonna put a financial strain on the city. So don't listen to exaggeration, listen to facts. And that's the facts. It's not gonna cause a strain. Nobody cares though this side. That's the reason why we're not getting service, not because of money. Forget about it. You know Makana, move your animals there, they had a tipping fee.
Right, they gave the money. Sorry. Thank you. Are there any questions for Senator Favilla? Chair recognizes board member Amy. Senator, please.
I was at Tsukitano for many years, so I do, I do, I did see the eczema and the skin issue that.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I hear that. And I also, I also am concerned because Nanakuli, there's a lot of problems, yeah? And so, losing all those taxes, that's a big concern. So I'm wondering what the, what our state government is suggesting on how to make up the lost taxes.
Right. So the city, the city council meeting and the people that was talking about them, they have ways of having this thing done. The taxes are not gonna be more expensive. Coolina not gonna pay anymore, they're not gonna pay anymore. There's other funds that they're gonna use to funding, to release and have the relief for the families of that. And you guys gotta look, it's one mile, it's not that much houses, really. And then when somebody said that, if one person buy a house because the value went down and the other person moves in, I don't think, it doesn't come like that. Because they already know the land tax. Makana living over here, you buy my house in Nanakuli, you not gonna get the same provisions. Right? Because how you gonna get the same breaks when you never lived there for thirty years? It's the guys who lived there a long time. So they're gonna be offended.
Any other questions from fellow board members? They seeing none, we'll take one more testimony, uh, online and one more testimony in person. We'll go now to Mr. Kamua Lo Warner.
Aloha, can you hear me? Aloha, can you hear me?
Can you speak up?
Can you hear me now?
Can you speak up a bit more?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Great, great, good. Uh, aloha, board members. Uh, Bill thirty-nine before the city council aims to provide tax relief to those in Nanakuli and Mailei affected by PVT landfill. One resolution before the board aims to affirm tax relief for those affected by PVT, Waimanalo Gouche, and also those homeowners impacted by the transportation of waste from the construction and demolition sites in Kapolei to the landfills. The second resolution calls for host community compensation for whole neighborhoods being affected by our waste processing and landfilling. From Mailei and now residing in Kapolei, my name is Kamua Lo Warner. I graduated from Nanakuli High with a bachelor's of science in natural resource management and a master's in public health from UH Manoa. I currently work as a teacher and a farmer at Nanakuli High in intermediate. I grew up on Mohii Street in Nanakuli. The Lualu, uh, the Lualu Le Plain was my backyard where, at the time you could see straight to the base of Uuheli Akala, the sacred and storied place of our ancestor Maui and Hina. But now we see Mauna Opala, as the keke call it, created by the PVT Land Company. And today I speak on behalf of my ohana that live, work, or go to school in the shadow of Trash Mountain. We respectfully ask you to support all three. Why? Because we need, we need to and we want to advance environmental justice for our community who are victims of environmental racism and to help resource our neighbors and neighborhoods to adequately address the ills of waste management in our communities. On Oahu, nearly all landfilling, waste to energy processing and recycling of Oahu's waste occurs in West Oahu in areas with high concentrations of native Hawaiians. Waimanalo Gouche adjacent to Honokaihale and Makakilo communities, H Power adjacent to Kapolei communities whose ash and construction demolition waste have been driven through Kapolei, past Honokaihale and Makakila to, Makakilo to end up at the gouche or further through Nanakuli Homestead to end up at PVT. In Act seventy-three of twenty twenty, the state of Hawaii established Hawaii statewide buffer zone law, which includes a prohibition of landfills one half mile between the edge of waste or disposal activity and the nearest residential school or hospital property line. While this is a great step towards minimizing the impacts of landfills, it does not address the ongoing plight of the thousands of our neighbors that live next to landfills. According to the CDC, the census tracts that include Nanakuli Homestead and the neighborhoods of a young homestead road and Mohii Street have the second and third lowest life expectancies in the state. Current and available public health studies associate living in close proximity to a landfill with poor health outcomes and low quality of life. As a construction and demolition landfill in specific, the current PVT landfill contains tons of drywall, which eventually breaks down to reduce hydrogen sulfide gas. Residential exposure to this gas within three point one miles of a landfill is associated with lung cancer deaths and hospitalization from respiratory illnesses. The policies that regulate our landfills and waste sitter are still incomplete, but Bill thirty-nine and these resolutions help us move in the right direction. I encourage you all to support these measures and to keep in mind that justice delayed is justice denied. Mahalo, Nuri.
Oh, mahalo. Are there any questions for the testifier from the fellow board members? Seeing none, uh, we're gonna go for one more testimony in person. Uh, okay, we go. If the, okay, gang is currently ten o'clock, but I see that we still have testifiers that were wanting to be here this evening. Is it okay for us to allow the final testifiers? I see one, anyone else wishing to testify, Auntie. Okay, two, anyone else online? So there'll be three more testifiers at about ten more minutes. Is that okay, fellow board members? Okay, we're gonna go, go right ahead, Auntie.
Aloha, aloha, was from my Anai. No, I just love them. Because I just learn so much more than what I thought I knew when I walked in the floor. All of that said, I agree with Kamua Lo. He's doing his research. They're saying that I agree with Jermaine and with their senator.
Right.
But for being a president of the Wai nine, these things adversely affect us and not just those individuals who have significant health issues.
Right.
It affects all of us that have to be on the road with these big trucks that other places don't have to do to the island that we do.
Right.
And then when the freeway ends, it affects us that still has to tap, pass that way. So it's not only mentally, it's also a mental. Our spiritual. Also, this affects us holistically, all have been living in a community that carries a verdict for this island. And so you share that in four miles is what it's represented.
Right.
But the legislation that we have on hand is to a half mile and we're only asking for an extension of one mile. You know, it's like, I didn't even continue to tell town something that is so unjust.
Right.
When we're talking about an enlightened community, all enlightened party and they continuing to subjugate the same area, proximity, the same people and bring in more people that further denigrates the community. And then they say, well, this community, I speak of the Wai nine more. We have all of these tragedies because of our population. Now, why is that so? We have the native population. So we don't need that we need the PVT. But do we need it in the Wai nine more?
Hmm.
I don't think so. I think that we need other areas to share the burden that benefits all of the one. And I consider it, this would just be for pastors, nothing picture. Because it should not, should not be a understood as we consent to letting this occur because not even compensate us. There is no due, there is no just compensation of what we have had to endure. But they want us to continue in here because this is not limited. This is gonna be Waimanalo Gouche, right across from my community, Nanakuli. Where is that? Why Anai value? So they wanna come up into our tomb lane row and say this is the most affordable way for us to continue to shoulder the burden for this whole island.
Could you kindly wrap up, please?
So I just, before you focus to give consideration, put the information all around, mahalo.
Mahalo. Is there any questions for the testifier? You seeing none? Auntie, come, Uncle Mel, come, come.
He's got that for last. Particularly, I can't believe.
Aloha, my name is Lokana Kelly, Porpor, I too am from Wai Anai. And I'm here, you know, we're so passionate when it comes to certain things.
Hmm.
And today what we speak about is not just PVT, but about our health and, and about our community. We know that Wai Anai is, my sister said, but I share the same thing. We burden a lot. And I'm not just saying that, we burden a lot on our landfills, we burden a lot on our shelters. And all we're saying is, whahu, help us. Why is everything concentrated here? Is it because we're the poverty people?
Hmm.
Is it because we're non-voters? You know, we pay taxes too. We have traffic. So what does that say? We've got working people, you know? We've got people that go to college. We've got people that go to school outside of our communities. PVT has been a very good neighbor to us. I admit that. They're very good. They point to our community, they do scholarships. PVT, my brother, he was just amazed at how, like a senator said, their operations of what they do to secure things, to make it mono. Like Brother Warner said, the justice that we look for is what we're here about today. You know, we know that the county said they are post payments that they'll give to our people. They're not always good about things because they funnel it in instead of contract treaty that where it should be, it sometimes gets spread around general funds, whatever the case may be. But that's what we need to become accountable with our legislators. And like you said, they're not here today to stand. We're here to stand. And we are, and we have that opportunity to speak our hearts. And thank you for correcting us. And even when, you know, not to be personal, that we wanna do. Because we have our right to agree to disagree. So today, even though I'm not in support of it, only for the fact that the way it is written, maybe needs to be really looked into that a little bit more. But I am in support that our people should be compensated. What is that marker? How far is injustice? How far is injustice? Can you put a tag on that? You know, but our people need to be compensated. And all I say is to share that, that, that burden to the rest of our island. You don't see this kind of thing happening in Oa'i Kai. You don't see these kind of things happening in Ka'ihua. They got people who stand. So we're here today just standing to share our hearts. Thank you again.
Mahalo, appreciate it. Any questions for the testifier? Oh, Auntie, come, come. There's a question from Uncle Mick.
When I lived in California, we had city gas electric in the neighborhood that I lived in, also under Marina. And their power plant used to put out whatever they used to put out. And we would get the fallout all over our house, all over our boat. It was PPDs to compensate us for what it cost for us to clean our houses and boats and things like that. Nobody has yet come up with the idea, maybe PVT should be the ones who are paying the people in the general senate who is being affected by this. We always try to take it out of the, the tax, we always try to pay for it. We never, we never make the developers finish the Makakilo extension. Instead, they went to the city council, got let off the hook for having to do it. So why isn't the PVT is the one that's compensating the people who they are affecting in our neighborhood? It's just a thought, you know, that hasn't been brought up. I talk to myself, I remember getting checks for PPDs.
I think, I, I think, and that's a good point, but I think this is how perhaps PVT is giving back to our community. And the things that they do for our community, and the support they do for our children. And not only they're in the education, they're giving back in abroad and it's from, not only Nanakuli, it is from Wai Anai. So they're taking care of the whole world when they're giving back to our community. It's not focused to that immediate area. Okay? So I, I stand for what PVT, like I said, is a good neighbor. They've been a good neighbor. They've been a good neighbor to our.
Mahalo. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, last testifier, last testifier.
Thank you, Edgar. Oh. Are you killing, you doing all right?
Welcome, Uncle Mel, hello, thank you for being here.
Members of the board, I appreciate you allowing me to speak today. You know, we, we, we need to make some corrections here, especially on the cost for, uh, the city that the supposedly eighteen million dollar loss. You know, we, we, we actually, let me give a quick snapshot of how this bill came about. It was all about the people that's living next to the PVT landfill, complaining about the dust, complaining about respiratory problem. So we introduced several resolutions at the last legislative session. We finally, at the full house and the full set unanimously approved the two resolutions that ended up at the city where Bill thirty-nine came about. So the results of all that artwork at the ledge resulted in Bill thirty-nine. And, and the reason why And, and the reason why a lot of the, well, all of the members at the House and the Senate voted, it was because of this CDC survey or this, in this, the CDC track survey that they did. The federal government came out with a census tract surrounding PVT and made an assessment claiming that people that live around PVT lives within a mile and a half, lives ten years less than people that lives outside of PVT. So after listening to all of the testimony, showing them all of the, of the reports from the, the feds and CDC, this is why I agree. We need to get compensated for the people that live within a mile, needs to be compensated somehow. The big question about having PVT paid for respiratory problem, for masks, for painting their homes, we've tried many times. I work for Iron Workers Union. I'm a lobbyist for them. I, I, I work alongside Makana Paris, hopefully he gets well suits, he can come back to work and take the burden off of us. But, you know, we've been working hard on, on all of the stuff that's been going on in Nanakuli, Waiala, the Oahu or community. And we finally got this bill unanimously approved, not only by the budget committee, but by the entire city council, including Andrew Nakanu, who voted yes, with reservations. But it was all about telling us what we can do to compensate these people. And the milestone was mentioned earlier by the earlier testifier. You know, we don't look at a large number. We're looking at twelve hundred Hawaiian homes. Twelve hundred Hawaiian homes that's currently within that one mile radius. There's a total of twenty-four hundred. That's including, and why it came up, and, and, and this numbers came out from the city director for the budget department, okay? Andrew Nakano. Someone, he came up with this number. And the money that was mentioned about the eighteen million, it's a seven million dollar loss, not only eighteen million dollar loss, the seven million dollar loss a year. So all of this information I have, you want me to share it with Nakano or the chair? I could pass this on. But anyway, we need to just clarify some of the stuff that was mentioned earlier. It's not the amount of, it, it, it's a small number of homes. And it's not the eighteen million dollars that people are claiming that the city's gonna be moved in.
Okay, um, thank you for the testimony. Are there any questions from fellow board members?
One more comment, if you don't mind?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Yeah. If people wants to benefit from this property tax, no, no big property tax, take the landfill, put them in your district. And so, not in Makakilo, the bird they have probably live in, I lived up here for many years. Where I live, I've been up here for fifty years, full time. Don't look here, but I am.
Thank you. Any questions for Uncle Mel, who is a resident of Makakilo? Okay, seeing none. Um, we are over time, but I did wanna make sure that all of our testifiers could speak. And Dr. Bryce Cherkilini Dudley's recommendation that we only speak to Bill thirty-nine ended up happening because we ran out of time. So we will put this on a special agenda for the next board meeting so that we can take up this matter and the resolutions without any other reports, except for the presentations already committed to. Would that be fair? Okay.
Auntie, vote now?
Oh, we can vote now if there's any discussion. Um, we have to, is there any other public testimony? Is there any discussion from fellow board members?
Um.
Yes.
Uh, can you just clarify, are we voting on this resolution or the bill?
Just the bill. And the way that I would, the chair would recommend, hearing the concerns that if we do move to actually support it, that we would support the intent of the bill because things could change. Right? Unless you want to pick it down to half a mile and whatever, whatnot, then we, I think we need another session. For that. But, but the chair would actually recommend that if we will support this, that we're supporting the intent of Bill thirty-nine to provide environmental justice, but do not preclude the fact that we're here in Nanakuli Waiala Neighborhood Board, that the burden is across nine-six-seven, nine-two, right? It's, it's not just there. So is there any other discussion from fellow board members? So is there a motion?
I think the motion that we have a board member there before, support the intent of this bill.
Okay, is there a second? It's removed and seconded by Dr. Kyoni Dudley and Nikia Lynn Stone. Is there any further discussion from fellow board members? Okay, do we need to do a roll call or how is everybody feeling about, everyone in favor? Okay, let's do a roll call, both.
Bossler.
Yes.
Yay, yay.
Yeah.
Iron, iron no. Or, or two abstentions as well. Dudley?
Aye.
Ferreira abstaining. Bahela.
Uncle Moon?
Yeah. I'm asleep then.
Uncle Moon? I'll text him.
He's sleepy.
Okay, let's go to the next one. Time.
Aye.
Listo.
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Talaa.
So, Uncle Moon, are you aye? Is that an abstention? Oh, no, he's saying aye. Yeah.
Paris.
Aye.
Motion passes with both eight ayes, no-nos, and one abstention.
Yep. Thank you very much, Neighborhood Board. And with that, we will table all the rest of the business to the next board meeting. Final announcement of the evening is the Makakilo Kapole Honakaiahale Neighborhood Board number thirty-four's next scheduled meeting will be held on Wednesday, September twenty-seventh, and twenty-twenty-three. And with that, good job, everyone. Mahalo Nui Lo, and very appreciate, especially to Auntie Jermaine for the order of the forum. Good, good. Mahalo, and we are adjourned.
Hello, Chair.
I, I will, that is my first word, it's what I gotta tell y'all.